This is the regular meeting, Santa Barbara City Council, May 21st, 2024. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Constitution, which stands as one nation, united in the Constitution, with liberty, justice, and the other.
Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Certainly, Councilmember Harmon.
Here.
Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez.
Present.
Councilmember Friedman.
Here.
Mayor Pretim Jordan.
Here.
Councilmember Sneddon.
Here.
Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez.
Here.
And Mayor Rouse.
Here.
Very good. Before we get going on the ceremony items, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge Kelly McAdoo's first day here as our city administrator. Welcome, Ms. McAdoo. And next thing I'd like to do is appreciate the efforts by Sarah Connect. Sarah stood up when we suddenly needed a city attorney, even though she was halfway out the door at the time, and stepped up to the cause. And then when we needed to have an interim city administrator, she did precisely the same thing. I don't think that was ever on her list of things to do before I die, but I think she did it. And she stepped up, and for that, I want to give her a round of appreciation. Okey-dokey. Would you read the next item, please?
Certainly. Item one, National Public Works Week, May 19th through 25th, 2024.
National Public Works Week, May 19th through 25th, 2024. Public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities, and to the public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the residents of the city of Santa Barbara. And whereas the 64th Annual National Public Works Week theme, "Advancing Quality of Life for All," spotlights the way public works professionals silently serve their communities, sometimes as first responders, working on roadways, managing public and residential building products, projects, preparing the community for natural disasters, and maintaining the local water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other essential community structures and facilities. And whereas public works is committed to modernizing the city of Santa Barbara's contracting processes by empowering the city council to use competitive contracting methods for the construction or improvement of city buildings, streets, parks, utilities, playgrounds, and other facilities, which will build and foster positive relationships with the local contracting community while ensuring the best possible outcome on projects and services that will benefit generations to come. And whereas the Public Works Department, the largest department in the city of Santa Barbara, is driven by dedicated staff to uphold its mission to provide the community with a sustainable foundation to thrive by delivering quality services and public infrastructure through efficient and fiscally responsible practices. Now, therefore, I, Randy Rouse, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, do hereby proclaim May 19th through 25th, 2024 as National Public Works Week, and I encourage local residents and civic organizations to recognize the importance of providing our public works and to recognize the contributions made to our daily health, safety, comfort, and quality of life. Congratulations. Director, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and esteemed city council. First off, I would like to thank the mayor and council for the support and the resources you provide the Public Works Department. I know you have a lot of very important competing requirements to take care of in this city, and often the public works aren't at the top of the public's visibility, but you all know they're extremely important to making this function, or the city function well, to taking care of our residents, our businesses, and our guests as well. As I always do on this important week for public works, I like bringing a couple members of our team here that maybe don't get the spotlight that other members of the public works team. So I would like to introduce them. First, Chelsea Swanson, a 19-year employee of the city, project planner in our downtown, Public Works Downtown team. And I think, as all of you know, project planning in the downtown area, it's not difficult at all. But Chelsea does an absolutely fantastic job with a mighty task. And then Tom Flenti is one of our mechanic twos, Fleet Services Technician Two with our fleet staff. We take care of 480 vehicles in addition to generators. Amongst that fleet includes our emergency response vehicles, police interceptors, and all our fire apparatus. Tom is one of our two Fleet Service Technicians who is California-certified to work on fire apparatus. And that's really important, because no one else can touch it but Tom and his one counterpart. And it's extraordinarily complicated, and all this happens behind the scenes so our emergency services can take place. So I'd like to recognize him. I don't know if you have anything you'd like to say? Tom, come on. I cannot have the, we have the greatest conversations with Tom. One of the most well-read members of the Public Works Team. But anyway, thank you very much.
All right, congratulations. Thank you, Director Mauer. Madam Administrator, are there any changes to the agenda?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
And you'll have to bear with me, as this is my first meeting, so I will, I may be looking for assistance from other.
Very good. Very good. With that, we'll move to the consent calendar. We have some items to read. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item two, correction of inadvertent codification errors regarding just cause, I'm sorry, item three, correction of inadvertent codification errors regarding just cause tenant protection and street improvement and permitting requirements, ordinance adoption. Recommendation, council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara correcting inadvertent codification errors relating to ordinance number 6139 regarding just cause tenant protection and ordinance number 6143 regarding street improvement permitting and permitting requirements. Item four, increase the city administrator's contracting authority and increase the competitive threshold for the purchase of goods and services, ordinance adoption. Recommendation, council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending the Santa Barbara Municipal Code Sections 4.52.060 and 4.52.070 to update monetary thresholds and adding Section 4.52.072 to authorize best value competitive contracting for goods and services. Item five, records destruction for the waterfront department resolution. Recommendation, council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara relating to the destruction of records held by the waterfront department in the harbor operations and business divisions. Item six, fiscal year 2024 third quarter review resolution. Recommendation, council D adopt a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending Resolution Number 23081, the position salary control resolution for fiscal year 2024 to amend the established salary for positions as listed and to establish classifications listed. Item seven, California encampment resolution fund sub-recipient agreement with the county of Santa Barbara resolution agreement. Recommendation, council B adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara amending Resolution Number 23076, adopting the budget for fiscal year 2024 to approve an increase in fiscal year 2024 revenue appropriation and expenditure appropriation in the community development miscellaneous grants fund in the amount of $1,488,820 founded by a California encampment resolutions, SURF grant. And I'll go ahead and read item 12 now, although I know we'll hear it separately. Item 12, renewal of levy for fiscal year 2025 for the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District. Recommendation, council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara declaring its intention to continue vegetation road clearance, implementation of a defensible space inspection and assistant program, and implementation of a vegetation management program within the foothill and extreme foothill zones, declaring the work to be of more than general or ordinary benefit, and describing the district to be assessed to pay the cost and expense of thereof, approving the updated engineer's report confirming diagram and assessment, and ordering continuation of the Wildland Fire Suppression Assessment District for fiscal year 2025.
All right, thank you very much. I already have a request for item six. Are there any items to pull off the agenda by council? And we also have, we're going to pull item 12, and we'll have a separate hearing on that. Madam Clerk, are there any, Madam Attorney?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We also need to pull item four off the consent calendar. So on my list, we need to pull item four, six, and 12 off of the consent calendar.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, are there anyone online that needs to pull an item?
No raised hands online, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. With that, I will entertain a motion to, for the balance of the calendar, absent four, six, and 12, Ms. Gutierrez.
I will move to pass the consent calendar.
Thank you. Motion seconded by Friedman. Can we have the vote, please?
Yes, this is a motion by Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez, Gutierrez seconded by Councilmember Friedman, for the consent calendar accept items four, six, and 12. Go ahead and vote, please.
Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. And we'll return to that for comment in a moment. First, Madam Attorney, a report from the Finance Committee. Mr. Friedman?
Thank you. Today, at the Finance Committee, we recommended approval of a loan to the Housing Authority for the project on Villa Lucero in the amount of $5 million. That will lead to 48 units. Many of them are two and three bedrooms, lower income. And then also, the item that's on today, number six, we approve that to the third quarter financials with those recommendations and forward that on to council.
All right, thank you very much. And with that, we were going to move to general public comment, and this is three minutes of the dais for any subjects that is not on the agenda today and is also within the purview of this body. With that, we'll start with Rick Hanson.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. The property tax is 0.51% per year in Santa Barbara and increases less than 2% per year. Therefore, the property tax a homeowner pays is limited to 2% per year on both the home in which they personally live and the home they may rent to tenants as a business. Unfortunately, this is not the case for tenants in Santa Barbara. Their housing expenses could legally be increased up to 10% per year. The disparity between the protection afforded for those paying a mortgage and those paying rent is inescapable. And if the landlord decides to renovate the property and evict the tenant on a no-fault basis, then the sky is the limit. The landlord can and has double or triple the rent. The evicted tenant now has the right to return, but has no way to pay for the increased rent. Without the protection of a sensible rent cap, the right to return is meaningless. And what is a sensible rent cap? I say it's exactly the same as the tax cap for property owners, 2%. That's right, 2%. All the costs of the landlord to operate their enterprise are business expenses. They have the right to expect tenants to pay a higher yearly increase than they themselves are required to pay? I don't think so. As the city council, you have the power to call for a vote by the people on whether or not they do want a 2% rent cap in Santa Barbara. To refuse to act on the rent cap crisis is beyond inexplicable. All the recent changes in the ordinance regarding tenants' rights were needed, but without a rent cap, they are undercut and undersupervised. Put a sensible 2% rent cap in place yourselves as a responsible city council, or authorize a vote at the next election by your constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Brian Munoz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How are y'all doing today? I'm Brian Munoz. I am the head of the Residential Division at the Westerly Property Management Group here in town. It is our understanding that the city attorney has pressed criminal charges against a competing property management company in town for not completing the just cause package correctly. We understand that the property manager used one of the top real estate lawyers in town to complete the just cause packages. The property manager simply signed the notice. With all the new ordinances, it's become hard enough to be a property manager. Expert attorneys are struggling with the ordinances, and I don't know how mom and pops in town could possibly navigate these waters. If this continues to happen, there won't be property managers here in Santa Barbara. It simply is not worth the risk and struggle. Landlords and property managers are an integral part of this community as well, and it is time to protect our rights as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Stephen Price.
Mayor Rouse, I missed what we couldn't discuss today.
You may not discuss anything that's on the current agenda today.
Which I don't know what that is, but...
Okay, it's in the back, and also, you're supposed to, whatever you discuss, we discuss is within our purview, things we have authority over.
Okay, so I should try to do my best, right?
Okay, best shot.
And I apologize, I have a headache the size of Texas. I don't know how people go without breakfast. And 40 years with ABC and CBS News, I've never known how to properly address a city council. So I'm going to use the gentleman from the General Works, and he said, "To the esteemed city council and Mayor DJ Randy Rouse. The Oxford English Dictionary defines a major seaport by inviting 30 cruise ships to their town." I read all the time that we invite 30 cruise ships, and so I'm going to assume that this is a major seaport. However, I've been riding the city bus for 20 years, and three weeks ago, I've waited for the independent Santa Barbara news press, which does not exist. I would have assumed they would have done this story. And Montecito Journal. Montecito Journal, Robert Bernstein, was in Japan for a month with his wife or girlfriend, I'm not sure which it is. And I asked him when he came back, because I was going to say this last week to y'all. He said the transit restrooms in Japan for the bullet train are, well, let's just say, Judge Hill always said to me for years, "What would Judge Hill do?" And I see my time running out, so I'm going to leave you with this for this week. Judge Hill would say to me for 20 years, "Steve Price, CBS News, what would Judge Hill do?" And I say, since the restroom is shut down at the transit center in an international city, and if an international guest had an emergency, would have to go seven blocks over to State Street. We had many years ago planned four restrooms on State Street. If you made it to the Marshals restroom with an emergency as an international tourist, international student, the restroom's usually shut down to be cleaned. So I say to you with nine seconds left, what would Marcia, what would Martha Stewart do?
Thank you. Next speaker is Amber Asher.
Hello, city council. My name is Amber. I've lived in downtown Santa Barbara with my daughter for well over 20 years now. You've seen me up here. I'm glad to be back. While I've actually won technically my case in court recently against my landlord at this point, because the case was dismissed entirely in my favor, I'm still fighting that. That fight is not over. I'm now facing an appeal to that decision by his lawyer on that behalf. And so my housing situation is still precarious. So I remain sort of in this conversation as an active person, fighting it, and somebody who thinks a lot about how I will go about a next place should I need to move out, and kind of what that housing market looks like. And I've been looking at it really closely as somebody who has needed to find a home for a long time. So you see the way that it fluctuates. My situation was brought about by multiple bad attempts to evict me in order to flip the unit where I live and a number of others in the same complex in order to double the rent. This isn't something I made up, it's something that my landlord stated as his intention. So thank you for what you've done so far in recent efforts to reduce the harassment. Those are all laid out, and we appreciate everything that's been passed, that's been written in, and to reduce further tenant protections by passing rights for tenants to return after a unit in a property is properly evicted under current city laws. We need to go farther to ensure that we afford tenants a sense of stability and to reduce homelessness for families and humans in Santa Barbara. We need to limit the amount a landlord or property group is able to raise rents after completion of renovations. We should be supporting and demanding responsible maintenance and renovation over rent evictions. Rent eviction has been used before the most recent protections as a tactic, sort of like a game, a method for maximizing investment profit margin. So if we have the goal instead of maximizing housedness, if we see housing as potentially mutually beneficial to those who provide it and those who receive it as a service, then we have to do better. We have to know that we have, we currently have a right in new tenancy to raise rents. We currently have an annual ability for housing providers to raise rents. And the 10% additional that's on the table, or I don't even know if there is a cap, there's not, right? So the amount that's on the table, it's, let's say they go through all the hoops and are able to do rent eviction, there's no cap right now. So we need to revisit that. We tabled it, let's bring it back, let's talk about it, and let's pass something that offers additional protection to those who are in a precarious situation here. Thank you.
Thank you. Stanley Zankoff?
Hello, Mayor and Council. Stanley Zankoff, I'm here as a co-founder and volunteer organizer with the Santa Barbara Tenants Union. And I'm also seriously concerned about the majority of you who refuse to limit rent hikes after a substantial remodel and to stabilize skyrocketing rents more broadly. The lack of a cap is a serious loophole for tenants who just want to pay our fair share without getting pushed out of the neighborhood. A few weeks ago, over 50 tenants came out to our West Beach Renter Forum to share about the fears and realities that we face on the issue of rent evictions and short-term rentals, as well as the lack of a more broad rent cap. The, that issue of the lack of a percentage increase cap on rent was almost unanimously and passionately supported by everyone there, not to mention the dozens and dozens of folks who have been expressing support for it before you over the last 15 months. At the forum, we heard from four really brave, really insightful neighbors who are under horrendous harassment and tremendous pressure from their landlords. And for context, just to reiterate, at the end of August last year, an LLC purchased a 52-unit property at 205 Bath Street for $16.8 million. The new owner sent termination notices the very next day, spreading panic that was heard throughout the city at City Hall, and that tapped into the growing public concern about skyrocketing rents and the growing practice of rent evictions. Two weeks later, we saw a website that advertised three units for rent, one of which was a shared studio for $1,450 a person or $2,900 as a single, a steal. And the new ownership at 205 Bath Street, that's Chris Parker, Austin Hurley, he, James Nap Jr., and Timothy Morton Smith, all locally based, used a barrage of tactics to, both legal and illegal, and I'd argue all unethical to get the tenants to leave voluntarily or self-evict. They've been pressuring residents to leave with offers of relocation assistance while also creating a chaotic environment for the holdouts who refuse to take the deal. Now just a handful remain. If you missed it, Ryan Cruz's independent article at the beginning of the month was a really good feature on this piece. To quote DN Softly, one of the former tenants at 205 Bath Street, "Where will the long-term tenants living in workforce housing go when they find themselves suddenly with no place to go? Displaced? What becomes of a city where communities are replaced by commuters? Is it sustainable from an environmental perspective? How do we foster connections with short-term or part-term time residents? A half dozen tenants at 205 Bath Street, well, they used to be, were elderly. Who's looking out for them? So please protect tenants by passing a cap on rent post-substantial remodel and give not just the tenants at 205 Bath, but all of us some hope that we won't get targeted in a predatory business practice. Thanks."
Next speaker is Aiken Potcrater.
Hello, honorable counsel. I want to thank you for your service to our community. And in the same spirit, I'd like to help the city save money and prevent some hassles. So anyway, it's about the police station. And I understand a new police station is going to cost $92 million, which is maybe the largest or one of the largest outlays the city's ever, ever done, for a 64,000-square-foot building and parking. And we have a building right next door, the news press building, that's 72,000 square feet, actually larger than the new possible police station would be. The last appraisal I could find for that building was $15,000. And we have a deficit of over $7 million in this city. I think we could actually purchase that building and remodel it and save tens of millions of dollars, and not displace the farmer's market, not cause a possible traffic issues at State and Correa where the new market might be, end up. A half dozen tenants at two one five Bath Street, well, they used to be, were elderly. Who's looking out for them? So please protect tenants by passing a cap on rent post-substantial remodel and give not just the tenants at two one five Bath, but all of us some hope that we won't get targeted in a predatory business practice. Thanks.
Next speaker is Aiken Potcrater.
Hello, Honorable Counsel. I want to thank you for your service to our community. And in the same spirit, I like to help the city save money and prevent some hassles. So anyway, it's about the police station. And I understand a new police station is going to cost ninety-two million dollars, which is maybe the largest or one of the largest outlays the city's ever done for a sixty-four thousand square foot building and parking. And we have a building right next door, the news press building, that's seventy-two thousand square feet, actually larger than the new possible police station would be. The last appraisal I could find for that building was fifteen thousand dollars. And we have a deficit of over seven million dollars in this city. I think we could actually purchase that building and remodel it and save tens of millions of dollars and not displace the farmer's market, not cause of possible traffic issues at State and Correa where the new market might be, end up. And it would stop the removal of about three dozen trees at the parking lot where the farmer's market is. And I hope that you'll consider it and consider the money, the money that you could save and what you could do with it. A lot of good in this city, I think. Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Burns. Sir.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Scott Burns, I'm representing Santa Barbara Sunrise Rotary Club. We are starting a nauxone training program to get rid of, get a medicine that'll help reduce the overdose, if you get the overdose of fentanyl, this will get rid of it, the nauxone. We're having the training program on June nineteenth at Unity Shop. It's a one-hour program. At six o'clock, a couple of weeks ago, some of you guys may have gotten some information from Holly with a link. So I'd like, if you have any of your friends that might be interested, they might want to join and do this. Once the person is trained, then we will give them the medicine for free, and then we're going to ask them to help train other people. We know there's a problem with opioid addiction, and we're doing a lot, and I just think with the Rotary Club, we're able to do more. It's part of the Rotary Action Group Addiction Prevention Program. If there's any questions, you guys mostly know how to get ahold of me. And thank you very much. It's June nineteenth, you have to register a week in advance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. As for speakers here, do we have anyone online for public speak?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two hands raised. We have Aaron Ashland and Lloyd Beardsmore. Aaron Ashland, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to thank Oscar for coming down and talking to some of the business owners last week about State Street. And then I wanted to congratulate Ms. McAdoo on her new job. But I called today specifically because I want to express my gratitude for your recent consideration of logic in the proposed parking fee increases. It's refreshing to see common sense prevail, especially considering the situation is slow where fee increases were rolled back due to public outcry. It's evident that simply raising prices doesn't equate to increased revenue unless the product or service is genuinely improved. Now, on to another discussion, the potential reintroduction of one-way traffic to certain sections of State Street. While I generally oppose regressing to prioritizing cars, I understand the complexities of decision-making. However, I urge you to carefully consider the implications of such a move. We recently witnessed a small-scale test of reopening sections, notably with Wendy Foster's closure after forty years. If opening the street was truly beneficial, shouldn't it have saved her business? I acknowledge the challenges facing her downtown exacerbated by recent difficult winters and the changing atmosphere under Mayor Rouse's leadership, particularly concerning the promenade. Perhaps the solution lies in conducting an A/B test, trying different approaches side by side. Opening a couple of blocks could be considered, but only if accompanied by the closure of others, allowing a fair comparison. Reflecting on past presentations by the State Street consultants we hired, safety and community were highlighted as key desires of promenade visitors. However, the introduction of speeding, throttle, and electric bikes has transformed the once pedestrian-friendly environment into a chaotic space. The vibrancy of State Street was notably evident during the dismount era of the five-hundred block. Therefore, I propose reinstating the dismount policy, particularly on the five and six-hundred blocks, to foster a safer and more inviting atmosphere for all. Remembering the days when children played freely in the street, I implore you to envision a return to that sense of community and safety. Let's strive for a downtown that's inclusive and accessible to all without the necessity of purchasing a bicycle to be safe. It's time to reclaim our downtown as a welcoming place for everybody. Thank you for your time, it's an important matter.
Okay.
Our last hand raised is Lloyd Beardsmore. Please go ahead.
Mayor Rouse and Council members, I was stunned to learn that a property manager is being criminally charged for a violation of an ordinance. In talking with your attorney, Mr. Henchke, back in January, I was concerned with the vague language in the Just House ordinance. I'd like to know what the sequence is before an owner or property manager can have fines or criminal charges brought about if there is a violation, as I don't see this outlined in the ordinance. Are we to assume that any violation can result in criminal prosecution? In recently abiding by city ordinance of the mandatory one-year lease offering to our tenants, one of our tenants didn't want to sign it, as he originally rejected a one-year lease, and he wanted to stay on a month-to-month agreement. He didn't understand the ordinance. English is his first language, and he is a teacher in one of our school districts. These tenant protection ordinances are getting so convoluted, even someone with a college degree cannot interpret them. I hear the call for a two percent rent cap, but if we want to hire a property manager, eight percent of our rents go to having that manager take care of our properties for us. Insurance was recently non-renewed on one of our property, on our property, so now we are trying to find insurance, if we can even qualify. I also don't understand why the council is authorizing a five-million-dollar loan to the housing authority when they had a net operating income profit of six million dollars last year off the very low to low-income tenants. And finally, I wanted to speak to the renewal of the levy for the Wildland Fire Suppression District. That being said, there are very little teeth in the law.
Mr. Mayor, that's an agenda item.
Thank you.
I thought that was removed.
No, that is still, that is coming up on the consent calendar as a separate public hearing item.
Yeah, we're having a public hearing on the, Ms. Beardsmore, so we'll be doing that on item twelve.
Okay. All right. It's just, I just, I would really like it outlined, how we can be criminally prosecuted if we violate any of these ordinances, because it is not outlined in the current ordinance as it's written now. So I hope that'll be addressed, if not today, at another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public speakers online? Madam Clerk?
There are no further hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. That concludes that. We will move back to the poll consent items. We'll start with item four, Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with this item, the adoption of this ordinance, there's a small typographical error, and I would request that the maker of the motion to approve this item include a small amendment to the motion so that it corrects the typographical error, which would be in section four point five, two point oh six oh, subsection B two, to read as follows, purchases over ten thousand dollars and up to a hundred thousand, and in the writing of a hundred thousand should replace the period with a comma. So the changes are changing a hundred thousand to ten thousand and replacing the period with a comma in the one hundred thousand. Those are the only corrections.
Okay, very good. Any questions or potentially a motion for that item?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that item with the revisions as outlined by our city attorney.
Okay, first by Harmon, second by Alejandro Gutierrez. We have a roll call vote on item four, please.
Very good. This is a motion for item four, a motion by Councilmember Harmon, seconded by Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez for item four as recommended, including the amendments as noted by City Attorney Connect. Please go ahead and vote.
Motion passed unanimously, thank you. Move to item six, Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since there is part of this item pertains to the Disney litigation, and I am a minor shareholder in Disney, I've been advised by the city attorney's office, the city attorney, that I should recuse myself from this item, so I will be doing that.
Very good. And since this is a consent item, you do not leave to leave the room, but I will entertain a motion on item six. So moved by Harmon, seconded by Michael Jordan. Give it a shot there. All right, very good. May we have the vote, please?
This is a motion for item six by Councilmember Harmon, seconded by Mayor Patton Jordan. And my understanding is, Mr. Friedman, you can simply hit abstain on your screen.
Thank you. The vote passes six to one with one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item twelve, we have a separate public hearing on that, so we will open the public hearing for public comment on item twelve. And if there is no public comment or council discussion...
Ms...
Yes?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, there is one hand raised.
Oh, there is a hand raised, okay. May we have that, this is for this item?
Yes, we have a hand raised now for presumably item twelve, Lloyd Beardsmore.
Okay, very good. Ms. Beardsmore, go right ahead.
Right. Go ahead, Lloyd Beardsmore.
I just wanted to say that I support the renewal for the levy for the Wildland Fire Suppression District. That being said, there are very little teeth in the law compelling homeowners to do their defensible space. Also being complaint-driven, unless neighbors complain, nothing happens. The Eucalyptus Hill Improvement Association has tried to work with a homeowner owning most of the canyon along Eucalyptus Hill Road for the past two years on fire prevention. This is one of three evacuation routes out of our neighborhood. This canyon is identified and the CWPP is a top priority. The homeowner has refused to work with us on a grazing project despite being partially funded by concerned neighbors. He hasn't done his defensible space for years, let alone any work in the fourteen-plus acres surrounding his home. We need council to do something to make these existing laws more enforceable. When we can see that there's criminal prosecution of property managers over homeowners that don't abide by wildfire regulations that endanger public safety, then we have an issue. We're very supportive of the fire department, but I think they need their help in putting more teeth behind these laws to get people to do what they need to do to keep the public safe. And I hope that the council will look into seeing if there's anything else that can be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other further public comments online?
No further hands raised, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. Any discussion by council members on this item? Okay, if not, we'll close the hearing and move to a motion on the item. Moved by Sneddon, seconded by Oscar Gutierrez. Can we have the vote, please?
This is a motion by Councilmember Sneddon, seconded by Councilmember Oscar Gutierrez for the recommended action for item twelve. Please go ahead and vote.
Vote passes unanimously, thank you very much. We will go now to council member committee assignment reports, for anyone that has one. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse, for official committees. Water Commission met, I don't have my notes with me, but I do remember that the headline was that the water supply is good and is going to be good. And then we also had Kachuma Operation and Management Board meeting and approved this year's budget upcoming, and those would be the official committee assignments.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Friedman?
I attended Beacon, and we adopted the budgets for this upcoming year.
All right. And if there are no further committee assignment reports, we'll move to the next item. If you read that, please, Madam Clerk.
Certainly. Item thirteen, fiscal year 2025, recommended enterprise, internal service, and special revenue funds, operating and capital budget.
Mr. DiMartini.
Good afternoon, Mayor Rouse, members of the City Council. My name is Keith DiMartini, I'm the city's finance director. I'm here with Ms. Natalia Glusick, the city's budget manager, Ms. Valencia, Ms. Needle en masse from the finance department, and it is our pleasure to present an overview of the city administrators' recommended budget for fiscal year 2025. And today, on the agenda, we will be talking about the internal service fund departments, the enterprise fund departments, and a couple of other special revenue-funded departments. And that is on the agenda for today. At the conclusion, we will take questions, public comment, and discussion. Staff from each of these departments is here today to support the City Council through their, through the meeting today. And so at the conclusion of each department section, like we did last week, open it up for council questions, if that is amenable to the mayor. We would propose doing the same thing as last time, and then take public comment at the end of the staff presentation.
And once again, Mr. DiMartini, this will be strictly about budget, not about department operations per se.
Mayor Rouse, that is how staff has structured this presentation, that is correct.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. So next slide, please. The recommendation for today's presentation is for council to hear a presentation from the enterprise fund and internal service fund departments, enterprise and internal service fund capital expenditures, and special funds regarding their fiscal year 25 recommended budget. So on this slide, just to remind council and the public where we are with the budget process currently. Last week, we held two meetings, one was about the general fund departments, and then also the special meeting for downtown parking. Today, we are hearing enterprise, internal service funds, and special revenue funds. And then the next scheduled city council meeting regarding the budget is in two weeks from today, the city council regular meeting where we will have budget deliberations, where we will take, where we have been taking your feedback, and we will propose those items to the city council where you will have an opportunity to vote on specific changes that you would like to make to the city administrators' recommended budget. We will then take all of that feedback and those actions and prepare for the budget adoption meeting, which is scheduled for June eleventh. So next slide, we will first start with the internal service fund departments. So just a reminder, the internal city service funds are those functions of this local government that serve and benefit the other city departments. And so that includes in sustainability and resilience, the energy revolving fund, information technology. In public works, we have two internal service funds with facilities and fleet, and then finally, the self-insurance fund. And so we will have the same set of slides that we presented last week, where we will present an overview of the revenues and expenditures for each of these operations. We will go into a little bit of detail about the major changes in the fiscal year 25 budget compared to the second year of the two-year plan. We will talk about position changes, we will talk about any changes that they are proposing for their fees and their capital projects, same as last week. In this presentation, you will also have a slide for each of these departments in regards to their reserves. The internal service funds and the enterprise funds all have a reserve requirement according to the city council-approved reserve policy. And so staff wanted to present a trend of their reserves over the past couple of years and where they are currently today as it relates to your budget conversation. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Needle for the first one.
Thank you, Mr. DiMartini. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I will be talking about the energy revolving fund as part of the Sustainability and Resilience Department. The energy revolving fund manages electric energy and natural gas utilities across the city. Any savings are reprogrammed into energy efficiency and resiliency projects at city facilities. This fund includes the alternative transportation programs or work trip for city employees, which includes subsidized transit passes, bike tune-ups, and carpool programs. With the maturing of the SB Clean Energy Fund, staff is proposing to move most of personnel and program expenses from this fund to the SB Clean Energy Fund. Here's a breakout of the fund's revenue. You can see the allocated utility revenue and alternative transportation revenue is increasing by three percent, and that the energy conservation allocated costs are being eliminated, which will bring relief to departments citywide, including the general fund. Here we have a breakout of the expenditures for this fund. You can see a pretty significant decrease in salaries, benefits, and allocated costs, which is due to moving those to the SB Clean Energy Fund. SB Clean Energy Fund. Again, the major change here is, are those costs moving from this fund to the SB Clean Energy Fund. Moving along to fee changes, both the internal charges for utility management and alternative transportation are increasing by 3%. As mentioned previously, the energy management allocation has been eliminated. And finally, the rideshare carpooling program is increasing from 30 cents a mile to 50 cents a mile. Finally, as Mr. DiMartini mentioned, here is the reserve slide. This is a chart that shows the reserves for the energy revolving fund. These reserves are typically used to pay for energy efficiency and other climate actions at city facilities. To the best extent possible, staff tries to put the money in this fund to work, which results in somewhat of a narrow reserve picture. Reserves here can fluctuate year to year based on energy prices and usage, which can be difficult to estimate. However, because many of the fixed costs are moving out of this fund to the SB Clean Energy Fund, staff is confident in this overall performance of this fund, and it's in good shape moving forward. I'd also like to note that this reserve target is shown higher than it should be because this didn't anticipate moving most of the staff and the program costs out of this fund into the SB Clean Energy Fund. And with that, I'll open up for questions.
This section. Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I just want to check, is this one we would ask questions about anything about sustainability and resilience, or just about the energy revolving fund?
Councilmember Sneddon, in this presentation today, I think there are three times where we will hear from the Sustainability and Resilience Department. This is the first because this is an internal service fund. The next one will be the Santa Barbara Clean Energy Enterprise presentation coming in later. And then finally, the Creeks Division, which is more of a special revenue fund. They're towards the tail end. So I apologize for kind of breaking up the department, but we kind of grouped it in those categories.
No, I appreciate it. I wanted to ask my question at the appropriate time, so I'll reserve it for the Creeks portion. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions for that section? Move on to the next section, please.
All right. Moving on to the Information Technology Department. Here you will see a pretty significant increase in both revenues and expenditures to the Information Technology Fund. And the deficit for FY25 is due to increases in salaries, benefits, allocated costs, and will be partially mitigated by salary savings of a position being held vacant. You can see the revenue is increasing, and that's primarily due to absorbing the electronic communications team from facilities. Revenues are generated by the IT rate allocations to departments for services, which are based off of their operating expenditure budget. Again, as noted before, you will see a pretty significant increase due to the, for expenditures, and that is due to the centralization of electronic communications, which you will see in salaries, benefits, and non-capital equipment. I'd also like to note that there is a transfer for the desktop replacement program, which is a rate-funded capital project, and you'll see that on their capital slide coming up. So here are these two centralizations broken out. You can see the impact to expenditures and to revenues for the centralization of electronic communications. Information Technology had two position changes, the first being they absorbed a network analyst from the library, which will be reclassed to a GIS supervisor for roughly $220,000. You will then see a reclass for a vacant electronic communications technician to an administrative analyst one for roughly $162,000. Moving into their capital, most, all of these projects are general funded, with the exception of that desktop replacement program, which previously mentioned that these are rate-funded, as a rate-funded project, and then transferred into capital. And here we have the reserve chart. The FY24 budget had planned usage of excess reserves to reduce the increases to the IT rates and bring reserves closer to the policy target. In FY25, the policy target increased due to the addition of the electronic communications. The use of reserves will be required this year due to position centralization not captured in those IT rates and salary and benefit recalculations. As mentioned previously, the FY25 deficit will be primarily mitigated by salary savings of a position that's held vacant, which should help reduce the reserve impact. And.
Honorable Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, I'd like to also add on these slides, you will see a gray bar in FY25. That is the planned capital expenditure that they have budgeted for the coming year. And the reason we put that on is because some of these enterprise funds do use their reserves to fund them. In this case, it's much higher than the reserve, and part of the reason for that is, as Ms. Needle mentioned earlier, there's a lot of general fund and rate funding, funding those projects. But we feel that it's important to show that amount. So you will see a gray bar on the far right of many of these slides.
Do we have questions for this section? I just had one on the capital, the gray bar when it's capital reserve. When we do this in IT, are we actually purchasing hardware, or is there, is it a service? What is it that we're, when you have a capital?
The capital is actually hardware, network. I believe we have staff on hand that can answer that in more detail.
Yeah, I mean, I don't need a ton of detail. I'm just kind of curious because as, as we delve into more and more things, it seems like there are service-oriented and cloud-oriented things that are not hardware, per se, and I didn't know where this fell.
Yeah, Honorable Mayor, it is hardware, but there is some software and services to implement that software as well.
Inside of that same number?
Inside of it, and it will move into our operating budget in the following year.
Thanks. That's all I need to know. I appreciate that. Thank you. We'll move on to the next section, unless somebody else has a comment? Nope, yeah.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, and members of staff and the council. I'll be going over the Public Works Facilities Enterprise Fund. The Facilities Management Fund includes two programs, building maintenance and custodial services, which are designed to support internal services to all departments in the city. On this revenues and expenditures overview slide, you will see a total revenue decrease of $733,411 due to anticipated reduction on account of FTE movements, full-time employees. On the expenses slide, you will see a decrease of approximately $1.4 million, also mostly related to the movement of electronic communications staff to IT for organizational centralization. On this facilities revenue slide, you will see a total decrease in the FY25 recommended budget of $733,000. This includes an increase to ICS custodial services, an increase to building maintenance, and an increase of $250,000 in work order building maintenance for billable services they provide throughout the year, as well as a $1.5 million decrease in ICS communications related to the move of electronic communications to IT because of centralization. The $5,500 other revenues you see here are related to project compensation of property damage, projected, pardon me, and sale of scrap. Sorry, went back. On facilities expenditures, you will see an anticipated reorganization saving of approximately $1.4 million due to a reduction in salaries, benefits, and allocated costs because of the FTE movement to IT and public works engineering. You will also see an overall $41,524 reduction in supplies and services. This does include an increase of $104,365 in engineering services. There was a $26,288 increase in special projects related to general fund materials and a $5,000 reduction in non-capital equipment. The main changes in facilities are a $1.5 million reduction from the two-year plan due to the centralization of electronic communications from facilities to IT. There is also a $579,811 decrease due to three engineers moving from facilities to the general fund, and a $104,366 increase in expenses to account for those engineers moving to general fund facilities, as services provided by those staff will now be charged back to facilities. In facilities positions, the main changes are electronic maintenance staff moving to IT, and this costs a reduction of, again, $1.5 million. There's also two project engineers to moving from facilities to the general fund, expenditure decrease of $121,910 due to an eliminated facilities maintenance superintendent position moving from facilities to the general fund. And there is a current recruitment for a facilities management or manager. In facilities capital, the radio system upgrade project has decreased from $2.7 million to $2 million and has moved from general fund to measure C. The minor facilities projects are recommended to continue in FY25 at $480,000, as well as paving at city facilities. And three new projects are being proposed for measure C capital, which are corporate yard repaving, corporate yard master plan, and minor renewal at La Mesa Park restrooms. For the FY25 reserves, in FY24-Q3, there's a withdrawal of $600,000 from ICS reserves to cover storm remediation and replacement projects in FY24-25. That's where you see this dip in at the ending reserve balance. There were no capital projects, and that's why you don't see the gray bar for facilities in FY25. And we are hopeful that some of those storm-related projects may be 75% reimbursable via FEMA. And if you do have any questions?
Thank you. Questions on this section for me? Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I just want to make sure I understand that last, just that very last bit there. So the gray bar made sense to me, which bravo. I think that's a great way to visualize the carryover. So this one, can you explain this again? I mean, it just, from appearances, it looks like there's way more money than our reserve target, and then we hit reserve, and now there's more. So just sort of philosophically, what's happening here?
So essentially, the reserves, sorry, Councilmember Sneddon, essentially, the reserves are held for things that are needed, such as the withdrawal of that $600,000 so that they can do those emergency works. When we do get reimbursed by FEMA and CalOES, there is a waiting period. So that hit will come in. We do live in a very danger-prone area, for lack of a better term, where we do have a lot of flooding, a lot of landslides, and, you know, we are also in an earthquake zone. So it is important to keep that amount there, and if we can replenish it, we do. I do suspect that there will be some use of those reserves in the coming year.
Okay. Thank you so much.
All right. No further questions. We'll go on to the next section, please.
Honorable Mayor Rouse, members of the council, member of the public, we are going to be speaking about the fleet fund next. The fleet funds are actually two funds. One is for operations and the other is for fleet replacement. The fleet operation fund tracks the operating costs of all the fleet services. That includes maintenance, repairs, fuel sites, et cetera. And the fleet replacement fund is where all the replacement vehicles and generators are purchased and accounted for. There are 13 positions associated with these funds. Sorry. The major highlights for the fleet fund this year is that we do have an increase in revenue, and that is because each year we anticipate the costs of maintenance and replacement to go up. We're also anticipating some green fleet regulation coming through, and those kinds of vehicles are a bit more expensive to purchase and maintain. We're also having some supply chain issues. So you'll see that in 2023, the actuals look a bit lower in that, in the expenditure line, and then they jump up in 2024. And that is because of limited availability of vehicles. So we had to defer some of those vehicles that were nearing end of life and extend their use while we were locating and purchasing other vehicles and waiting for their arrival. There is also, again, as I mentioned, the new regulation of the advanced clean fleet and clean truck check that is affecting the vehicle replacement by driving up that demand and also the rates in the schedule. As a reminder, all of the internal service funds do service the city departments, and so their revenues come in from the departments and follow, and within the fleet, excuse me, within the fleet, we follow the planning for anticipated maintenance. And we do have a schedule of replacements as each vehicle ages out of its useful life. As we prepare for compliance with the new green fleet regulations, we anticipate higher costs of vehicles and maintenance, and so the increase for that rate is reflected in what the departments pay to the street fund. We did have a consultant come in in 2023 to reevaluate the rate structure and schedule, and we are going to defer some of those increases to FY26, as we gather a bit more data to avoid overinflating and putting more burden on the other departments without need. Major highlights of the expenditure, costs are going up, as the increases are noted on the slide. The special project, $50,000 of that stays in line with the 2023 expenses that were actualized. There was some unplanned maintenance for some routine maintenance that you'll see that increase year over year on the special supplies, or, sorry, the special project line. In special supplies and services, those increased partly because the prices increased in, for generator maintenance and replacement parts. And there's also going to be a shoplift replacement, not shoplifting replacement, but a lift in the shop. $400,000. Sorry, just heard it come out. There's also some reductions, and that's due in part for non-recoverable bodywork and the reduction of contractual work. Again, the changes, you saw the special projects line go down, as described, and then also the special supplies and services went up slightly. And we are assessing and planning for logistical and financial impacts there. For the fleet capital, there is an increased vehicle replacement and collision cost because of the increased input prices there, and also the increased shop replacement, excuse me, the increased cost for the lift replacement. For the fleet reserves here, the reserves are brought in, again, by the departmental, what the departments pay into fleet, and that is where we get the funding to replace the vehicles from. So that is generally what those reserves are for. So if we need to replace a vehicle, it will come from there, and so the expenditures will be in line with that, that schedule. And with that, we'll take any questions on public works?
Yeah, you mentioned shoplifting. I thought we got a whole new approach to the budget that I wasn't aware of. Mr. Friedman?
Thank you. I don't know if there is an answer at this point because it's new, but with the advanced clean fleets for trucks, you're talking about, you're evaluating it, but do we have any estimate of whether it's going to be neutral for us or cost us more over time? What's the additional cost? And then, does this affect just the internal service funds? So is it affecting both enterprise and general funds?
To answer the second part of that question, I'll say that, yes, it's affecting all of the funds that have vehicles. So some of those are general fund departments. Others are enterprise funds. So anytime you see a city emblazoned car, or a police car, or the fire trucks going about, you're looking at fleet vehicles. We'll have our director answer the first part of that question.
Good afternoon again, Mayor, Councilmember Friedman. My department's working very closely with S and R on that issue. Right now, for advanced clean fleet, which is mid-sized vehicles, there is availability challenges for all zero emission vehicles. There's initial higher capital outlays. There's no doubt comparable vehicles cost more. Your question's specific to lifecycle costs. We're evaluating that. There are definitely advantages on the zero emission vehicles. Unfortunately, and I think as everyone knows, with new vehicles today, they're much more complicated. And that is making it a challenge for us because our repair costs. complicated, and that, that is making it a challenge for us because our repair costs are much higher regardless of what the engine is or the motor is inside them. So we're, we're working that out. Between sustainability and resilience and public works, we're hoping, hopefully in the next four to six months, to work a fleet management policy to include our commitment to zero emission vehicles in support of our, of council's direction towards carbon neutrality in 2035 and work that through the city administrator and hopefully get that in front of you.
I'm just trying to keep for, for budget, just real quick, because we've already had the presentation on the program, but for budget purposes, for the next few years, as that ramps up and we, we shift, so the upfront, we'd invest more in capital, so there might be an increase in our, in the budgets as we look at them on the coming years, but then we recoup a lot of that through the efficiencies over time. So if there would be a way over, that we can track that so we're aware of it, because I don't want it to look like we're spending that for capital and then that's it and not recognizing the savings on the other end.
Yes, we are going to do a deep dive into that, and there's probably going to need to be some flexibility to meet operational needs. Part of it's out of our control because it's, it's availability, and at least within California, every agency's faced with the same issue and trying to buy vehicles that just, in some cases, just the volume just isn't there to purchase. So we're working on that.
Thank you.
Ms. Sneddon?
Thank you. Just, I guess the same question on both of these reserves tables. So on this one, it, it has the gray bar for planned capital, and I'm, I'm just wondering why, like, if we know we're going to be purchasing a fleet and you have it planned out, why, why not put the gray bar in there to show that that money's spoken for? Or maybe I'm not interpreting it right.
Thank you, Councilmember Sneddon. You are indeed interpreting it correctly. There was an error in the data supplied for the slide where that number was not supplied, but we can definitely circle back to you with exactly what that number is. And that number is in the capital fleet budget, and it is included in there. I believe it's around $4 million for the year?
Yeah.
Okay.
That would make sense. Thank you. So that shows you how nice it is when it is there. So thank you.
A quick question. Do all the numbers for vehicles, are they outright purchases? And the reason why I ask that is I understood in the fire department, I believe we bought an engine on a lease purchase basis or whatever, and I just wondered if any of this other material was that same kind of arrangement?
Mayor Rouse, thank you for that question. So as of right now, all of our fleet purchases are paid with cash, and so we pay upfront with cash. A couple of years ago, we did leverage a lease purchase agreement through Bank of America where we, we were able to purchase three fire apparatus using that agreement for, at a very favorable rate at the time. And so that is definitely an option for the city to continue, to continue to explore going forward. We have exhausted the funds in that lease purchase agreement, so we will look again, probably when interest rates, the interest rate environment is more favorable, to consider doing that going forward.
Yes, I'd love to stay on top of that because of, you know, capital outlay and whatnot, if we could leverage something else. If there are further questions on this section, we will move to the next section.
Okay, up next is the self-insurance fund. So let's go to the next slide, please, which shows a summary of the revenues and expenditures in the self-insurance fund. And so just to remind council and the public, the city is self-insured. And so the self-insurance fund, again, as an internal service fund, its revenues come from an expense line in all of the other operating departments. And this fund provides general liability, workers' compensation, property, and other insurance support services to the entire city. And if, and you can see here on the summary slide that the expenses are exceeding the revenues that are coming in. And this is primarily due to the additional high increased costs for purchasing our insurance programs, primarily property and general liability coverage. Also, this fund will pay for claims against the city where the city needs to pay out claims. On the bottom of the slide, you will see some of the external factors that are, that are impacting our ability to purchase insurance coverage at a favorable rate. The insurance market is global, and so we are impacted by what we can purchase, by what might occur on the other side of the country as it relates to climate conditions, drought, wildfires, things that we are also prone to here, but also throughout the United States. On the liability side, we are seeing higher claims, primarily with jury verdicts and other claim amounts as well. On the next slide, you'll see that, again, the vast majority of our revenue in the self-insurance fund comes from those internal charges that are reflected as an expenditure on all of the operating departments across the city. On the next slide, you'll see how the self-insurance fund spends its money. Again, the vast majority is spent on supplies and services, and those are two things. It's the premiums that we have to pay for purchasing our insurance programs and also the claims that we pay out on an annual basis. We have very little salaries and benefits in the funded, only funds for staff, our risk manager, and then three analysts. Next slide, you will see that we have increased the budget for the general liability, property, and other insurance programs by over $1.2 million. The cost for purchasing property and general liability coverage in particular has grown substantially. Over the past couple of years, just to give you an example, for our property insurance program, it increased by 32% from fiscal year '21 to '22. It increased by 24% the next year. It increased by 23% the year after that. Those are very, very steep increases, and so it required us to review all of those premiums to make sure that we are adequately budgeted going forward. The next slide is the reserve graph. There is no capital in the self-insurance fund, so that's why there is no gray section of the bar in fiscal year 2025. Also, it's important to note that the self-insurance fund is not included in the city's reserve policy. There is technically not a reserve requirement for the self-insurance fund, so in place of that, the city contracts with an actuary, and they look at what are our, our known costs for our known claims and then future projected claims as well, and develop an actuarial report that informs staff how much money should be in that fund at any given fiscal year so that we can have adequate reserves to pay out those claims that are known and are projected going forward. And as you can see, the reserve level is far below the actuarial recommended level and is projected to decline in the current fiscal year and also decline a little bit further going forward. We had a really robust conversation with the finance committee not too long ago about a nine-year plan to gradually ramp up allocations into the fund over that period of time. We have implemented that plan. However, the costs that we have been seeing over the past couple of years have far outpaced what was originally being projected at that time, and so it has caused us to actually dip a little bit further down. So in preparation for the fiscal year 2026 budget cycle, we will do another analysis and revisit how much those allocations will have to increase, unfortunately, to get the reserve position back up to, on a path, a trajectory where it should be. But that will, in turn, be additional expense for all the departments that will need to contribute into the fund. So that concludes the self-insurance fund. If you have any questions?
Questions on this section for Mr. DiMartini? Ms. Gutierrez?
Thank you. Mr. DiMartini, can you explain on slide 42, just for clarity for the public to understand, on the purple box liability, oversight of at-risk population and the increased claim amounts and reduced competition?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez. So oversight of at-risk populations, that's the piece of our services that we provide in the community for children, seniors, and folks with a mental disability. We refer to those as the at-risk population because they have unique exposures there. So the next part you asked?
For the last two?
The last two? So increased claim amounts. So, for example, as you heard in the fleet presentation, the value of vehicles continues to increase substantially year over year. And so when we have a, a claim involving a vehicle collision with a city vehicle, the cost to repair the other party's vehicle is going up substantially as well. That's just one example of many in the claim field where the inflationary factor of claim costs continues to go up year over year. And then the reduced competition, that is a reference to what's happening, and you've probably seen this in the media, with insurance companies removing themselves from the California markets. We have seen very, very few companies, insurance companies, that will do business with public entities in California any longer, and those that remain are taking their premiums and raising them substantially based on the reduced market competition.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
All right, very good. And with that, we'll move on to your section, enterprise funds.
Okay, so now we're moving into the enterprise fund section of, of the presentation, and there are eight enterprise funds in the city. We will go in alphabetical order, starting with the airport, golf course, downtown parking, water, wastewater, Santa Barbara Clean Energy, the Clean Community Program, which is under the, the solid waste fund, the Marburg franchise agreement, and then finally, the waterfront. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Moss to present the airport.
Thank you, Mr. DiMartini. Honorable Mayor Rouse and council members, I'm, had the privilege of working with the airport lately on their budget, so I'll be presenting their information today. Go to the next slide. Thanks. The Santa Barbara Airport is growing. They actually have a new airlines in a couple of weeks. Delta will be starting at the airport. Fiscal year '23, they ended with a 14% growth in their annual passenger count, and in fiscal year '24, they're projecting to end with another increase of 7%, growth in their annual passenger count, and they're projecting to grow an additional 2% on the passenger count in fiscal year '25. These growth trends create additional revenues as well as additional expenditures for the airport. They're required to implement additional employee safety screening regulations next year and also acquire a new aircraft rescue and firefighting truck due to the use of larger commercial aircraft by our airline partners. The airport's mid-cycle budget adjustments were done based on the anticipated fiscal year '24 ending balances and revised projections. As a result of their mid-cycle budget adjustments, the airport budget net operating income went from $798,000 down to $486,000, basically a net operating decline of $312,000. Next, we'll look at the details of their revenue. Their overall revenue budget has increased by about $2.2 million. Majority of that is in that first category, the use of money and property. That's increased by about $1.6 million. This category is primarily made up of lease revenues. The airline-related lease revenues make up about 2/3 of the airport's lease revenues, and the non-airline-related lease revenues make up about 1/3 of the airport's lease revenues. The reason for the increases are that in fiscal year '24, their actuals were trending 11% higher than the prior year, and due to that growth trend, they've assumed an increase of 8% in the revenues for fiscal year '25, which amount to approximately $1.1 million. We're also budgeting increases to the other terminal and commercial aviation-related lease revenues in fiscal year '25. The second category that has a large increase is the internal charges category with an increase of about $594,000. That increase is specifically made up of a capital transfer from the airport operating fund over to the airport capital fund. You may also notice the intergovernmental category has a large $8.4 million balance in fiscal year '24 for that budget, but there's nothing budgeted in fiscal year '25. And that's because this category is a place where they receive their FAA grant-funded capital in the budget within the year they receive those funds. So it is corrected in fiscal year '25. As of right now, there isn't anything budgeted. Those budgets will come in mid-year as they receive those great grant funds. Now we'll look at the airport expenditures. The total increase in expenditures for the airport is $2.6 million. The largest increase in their expenditure budget is specific to the salaries and benefits of about $1.1 million between those two categories. This is mostly from increases in the group medical insurance, retirement benefits, and anticipated increases in salaries pending the completion of results from compensation study. They also have some large increases in supplies and services of about $200,000 there. That's mainly due to increases in both the usage and the rates for water and, and their electric utilities. They also have a large increase in that capital equipment and projects line, again, related to that $594,000 I brought up previously, and we're going to go over the specifics of it in the capital budget slide. They also have a large increase in their transfers of $482,000, again, related to that same capital equipment. They have a lot of transfers between funds here at the airport and also a small budget correction to their transfers out. And at the, at the end there, they have some increases to their non-capital equipment of about $79,000, and that's primarily made up of one-time equipment purchases they need to make required for the law enforcement. And as for fee changes for the airport, they are proposing some fee changes for both the parking and the commercial ground, ground transportation. The airport has put considerable effort into minimizing their fee increases to parking and ground transportation as much as they possibly can. They did extensive research during the budget cycle to compare to other airports and, and to make sure that our airport does remain within the market rates for parking and ground transportation fees. So their increased parking fee rates are not going to be quite as high as Burbank or LAX. They're looking like they're going to land more similar to the Ontario Airport parking fee rates. The Uber and Lyft pickup and drop-off fees are increasing from 50 cents, for, increasing 50 cents from $3 to $3.50, which is in line with the planned increase at the San Luis Obispo Airport. These increases in these two areas do help them achieve a 10% increase in their operating budget for the parking and ground, ground transportation. And the last little adjustment there for the special events, there's basically kind of a rounding adjustment from $303 down to $300 for the special events, just for clarity and cleanup, and it's a very minimal impact on the revenues. As for the airport capital, for their budget, they do have an increase of $594,000 across these various projects they have planned for fiscal year '25. You'll see that three of the projects do have increases to the budgets. Those three projects are the airline terminal improvement project, the airport share of AIP grants project, and the 495 Fairview hangar project. One of the projects does have a decrease shown in funding for fiscal year '25. That's the South Airfield Development Parking Project. It appears as a decrease here, however, it's really just a shift. They did shift funding into this current fiscal year. They have already been working on the project with the design work for this fiscal year, and so that's reduced some of the budget for next fiscal year. The project is still on track and planned to be completed at the end of fiscal year 2026. And they also have four new projects that they've added, and those four projects are the ones kind of at the bottom of the slide. Those four total $480,000. Lastly, we'll take a look at their operating fund reserves. Little bit of history about the airport's operating fund reserves. You'll notice that despite COVID, from fiscal year 2019 through 2023, their reserve balances did grow, and that's due to cost-cutting efforts they implemented during COVID and also, of course, the COVID relief funding from the American Rescue Plan Act. In fiscal year '24, they had a, they have a slight budgeted decrease in reserves due to funding some large capital projects and truing up of their residual agreements with their airline partners. For fiscal year 2025, we do have the gray bar there, and that equals almost $3 million of their planned capital. Upon completion of their planned capital at the end of next year, they're budgeted to have their reserves end right around $11.1 million, which is just slightly below the council reserve policy target of $11.3 million. The airport does have some short-term plans in the future to help build back up their reserves, and the way they're looking at doing that is through the passenger facility charge grants. They're going to be applying, obtaining reimbursements from applicable expenses that had already been funded, so that'll help them obtain some additional revenues. And they also have a long-term strategic plan to remain above the council reserve policy target and grow their reserves by completing the second phase of the South Field redevelopment, like I mentioned, by fiscal year 2026. This is going to add parking to their South Field area, eliminate the need for overflow parking and the related shuttle, which will reduce a lot of their operating costs.
Questions for the airport? Ms. Gutierrez?
A question for permit. Special events went from 303 to 300. Can you give me more details on why it went from 303 to 300?
Yeah, they just clarified that it was kind of confusing and made for a bit of a rounding error, and the impact is only going to be a $2,000 reduction in revenue, so it's just for clarity.
And for airport parking, I understand that we're increasing fees all through the city. How much of an impact does the airport fee increase? How much of an impact does the airport fee increase to the larger budget? Is this a need that we have to increase the fees to our parking to help balance our airport budget? And the reason that I'm asking is, I've had a couple people email me, and I've actually had that experience, where we live in a city near the ocean, and we get a lot of fog, and sometimes a lot of flights get canceled, and just heard a lot of complaints about cars and the fees going up. So if I can just get some more information on that question, please, thank you.
Mayor Rouse, council members, our parking will bring in approximately 10% increase to the overall parking program, not to the entire budget altogether. And the reason we're proposing those fees is, one, to stay in line kind of with the market for airports. It's a balance. Our parking lots are almost entirely full even during normal working weeks right now, aside from holidays, and so that helps to shift people to maybe think about using Ubers or other things over to the airport. But it also helps to counteract our increased fees with the shuttle service and staffing for parking. All of that has been increasing, so it helps us to just cover the existing fees.
Thank you. And then, transfers on Slide 53. Could you give me more detail? You explained very briefly about the transfers. Could you give the public a little bit more of details on those transfers?
Yeah, I can give that a shot. Thank you, Councilmember Gutierrez. Excuse me. This increase in the transfers, it's a net of two different adjustments to the budget from last time to this proposed budget. So there's a transfer increase of $594,000, which is that capital equipment and projects increase specific to the capital slide, but they also did a budget correction which reduced that increase overall down to the $482,000, and the reduction was specific to a change in their transfers out to another internal department within the city.
And what department was that?
To IT.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions on this section? Very good, thank you very much. We'll move to the golf course.
Apologies for the musical chairs. For the golf course, the Santa Barbara Golf Club is an 18-hole par-70 golf course with sweeping views of the San Andres foothills and the Pacific Ocean. This overview shows an increase in FY25 recommended budget in both revenue and expenditures. There's an 8% revenue increase overall of $403,000 and a 6% expenditure increase overall of $275,000 approximately. In golf course revenues, the rounds increased by 3,700 versus the original budget to incorporate current demand patterns. The major highlights associated with this revenue increase are a 7% increase in fees and service charges, a 17% increase to use of money and property due to interest income, a $75,000 increase in capital outlay associated with power turf equipment replacement, and $28,000 in other revenues are associated with miscellaneous grants for Santa Barbara golf course tree planting and Russ Morrison youth golf. In golf course expenditures, there's a supplies and services increase cost that is associated with water increase, fuel, and soil. There's also supplies and services, which includes a $28,000 for special supplies and expenses and miscellaneous grants funds, for $3,000 for the SPGC tree planting and Russ Morrison youth golf for $25,000. There's a $75,000 increase in capital outlays for the power turf equipment needs, which we, I spoke about briefly in the last slide, and for a total 25, FY25 recommended increase The golf course fees increase in their fee schedule is in response to higher service cost. This is consistent with city cost recovery policy. There's a $1 increase in green fees across categories, changed from $1 to $2, a $1 increase in cart fees, a $1 increase in driving range bucket prices. And in golf course capital, the recommended FY25 capital budget is consistent with the FY24 adopted budget and includes a request total of $600,000 split across player course improvements, power turf equipment, golf course improvement plan projects, and golf club infrastructure renewal. For the golf course reserves, we are seeing a steady increase in ending reserves over the past few years with a dip in FY2020 related to COVID. And although this graph is through FY2025, the department has significant upcoming infrastructure reinvestment needs that will be realized in the next two years for financial plans FY26 through FY27, as they have significant deferred maintenance for the parking lot, clubhouse, and golf course restrooms, which would take up possibly all the reserves in excess of policy. They have not programmed the use of reserves yet because they are completing their diligence regarding planning, design, and engineering.
And if I may interrupt just briefly, Mayor Rouse and council members, there is a mistake in this chart that gray bars should not be stacked. It should be on the bottom there, and the top of that blue bar is in fact the top of that blue bar. Apologies for the mistake.
Questions on the golf course? Ms. Gutierrez.
Why are we not increasing more of the fees? On Slide 62, why? I mean, we've increased the fees for other departments higher than the golf course, and even in the pandemic, it showed that the golf course was doing wonderful. And the population that goes to the golf course, I think, can pay those little extra fees. I mean, the airport fees are a lot higher, so I was just wondering how you calculated the increase of the fees.
Mayor Rouse, Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez, thank you for that question. We do begin our budget process with market research. We are a municipal golf course, and we want to keep golf accessible to the entire community. So while it may be viewed as a luxury sport, it's actually a sport that we want to keep accessible to children, women, people across our entire community. So we keep our pricing competitive with our surrounding community, and they are in line and competitive. So we want to provide the best quality. We are an enterprise fund, so we do cover the budget and contribute to the reserves while still remaining the best value in town. So it really is about keeping golf accessible to the entire community.
Where do we fall in range of fees compared to the cities that? What cities have you compared to the fees, our city fees, too?
We compare our city fees to the surrounding golf courses. Clearly, you know, Sandpiper is a different type of golf course than a municipal golf course. There's Glen Annie Golf Course. There are the golf courses in Ventura. So we look at similar golf courses within our demographic footprint, and then we price according to what, you know, is in line with those fees, but also really to manage the budget and the costs of the golf course, so that we're covering the costs of the actual maintenance and the other costs of operating the golf course, meeting our reserve fund policies as well. So it's a balance of all of that.
So are fees in the, are they lower compared to other golf courses?
They're lower than the other golf courses in Santa Barbara. I would say that they're a little bit higher than some of the golf courses in Ventura, but they're in line with our footprint where we serve golf. I would have to do a little bit more research to give you specifics, and you want to keep in mind, too, that golf has different pricing depending on the day of the week that you play, the time of the day that you play, if you're a golf club member, if you're not a member. We are actually increasing those pricing, $1 for the resident rate and $2 for the non-resident rate. So resident is going to get a better value and better pricing than a non-resident, so there's a lot of different ranges, and so you could pay anywhere from $65 to $125 for a round of golf. If you rent a golf cart, that would be in addition to your greens fees if you get there early and you get a bucket of balls. So there's layers of the golf fees that we look at and put that range out there based on many of these factors.
How many children programs do we have out of the golf course?
We have several children's programs. There are the Mighty Mights, the Little Golfers. We have the Russ Morrison Junior Golf Program. We also have the high schools and the community college and the colleges. So we have from the four- and five-year-olds all the way to the high schoolers that participate in youth golf programs.
Thank you.
Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. Can we go to the reserves, Slide 64? Because now I think I'm really not understanding. So if the gray goes down at the bottom, so even after that gray is spent, the reserves would still be a couple million dollars above policy target?
So, Councilmember Sneddon, yes, it would be. That being said, there are many capital projects going on at the golf course. As you might imagine, there's a lot of keeping up the greens, aging facilities. So there are planned capital projects that are from prior years, so this is just the 2025 projects, and I can let our business manager for Parks and Rec speak to it more specifically.
Thank you, Ms. Lusak. Mayor Rouse, Councilmember Sneddon, yes, we do currently have a surplus in the golf fund reserves. However, we are in the process of designing and evaluating some significant infrastructure improvements to the golf course, such as a complete redesign of the parking lot, including lighting. That alone could potentially run as high as $2 million. We have restrooms that need remodeling, the clubhouse, so we have significant infrastructure needs. These projects alone represent a substantial amount of money, so we're keeping that money in reserves as we map out and design those projects and get to implementation. We are putting $600,000 in capital outlays in the fiscal year 25. However, the projects that we have may exceed that, and at that point, we would come before council and ask for the utilization of reserves. For example, if our mower fleet is starting to age, we've been running into problems with even getting equipment. We have two mowers that we ordered last year that run about $168,000 combined. We anticipated that they would be here in March of this year, and we don't know when they're going to come in, so it might be that we have to find and source alternatives for fleet and purchase more equipment earlier because there's such a supply and demand issue. So we're in our phase right now of really determining the best use of those reserves so that we can complete those infrastructural needs.
Okay, so I guess, thank you. I think I'm getting used to the gray bar. So the gray bar is maybe things that are confirmed and already approved for capital, but there's also sort of the cash flow projection of what might be needed that maybe isn't approved yet, and that would, so maybe it might be nice to have like another way to denote that, because these do look, these last three have all looked like they're huge reserves and then above policy target.
Councilmember Sneddon, if I may, I really appreciate that feedback, and staff's attempt at this budget presentation was in response to feedback that we received last year during the budget hearings. Now that we have one consolidated citywide reserve policy under one document, we are now trying to standardize the presentation and reporting of reserves for all of the funds that have a requirement. So this is, we're moving on the path, and there's still work to be done, and that feedback is very valuable. We appreciate that, so we will plan on doing that going forward.
Ms. Gutierrez.
Yeah, can you tell me a little bit more about the capital replacement plan for golf, please?
Mayor Rouse, Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez, we have a 10-year capital plan that we work with the city, that we map out the projects for the next 10 years. We update it every five years and, again, every budget cycle. So in a two-year budget cycle, we propose what our capital outlays are and what our budget will be, and any revenue that comes in in excess of the budget will go to the reserves, which is why you see that surplus. So within the next two years, we have mapped out sewer lateral replacements, parking lot infrastructure replacement, a complete redesign potentially of the driving range, greens replacements, bunker replacements. So we have all these different plans, and so what we attempt to do is utilize this year's budget to get as many projects completed, and then we look at the budgets that are coming, that we've mapped out for the next eight years or so, and then we say this money will then be allocated as well. So it's a balance between the use of reserves and the money that we're able to put into capital outlays in the current year. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. Where can somebody find this outline of information? Is it within the finance department or?
Councilmember Gutierrez, the city has a capital improvement plan. It's a separate document on the city's website. It's actually, there's a link to it on the city budget in Open Gov off of the city's finance department website. Be happy to send a link to all the council members, but that is where it can be found. It shows the planned capital projects over the next five years with additional information from each department about those planned projects.
And it's all updated?
Councilmember Gutierrez, we do update that document every other year as it relates to the two-year financial plan, and so the next update will be for the '26-'27 planning phase.
Thank you.
All right, very good. If there are no further questions for this section, we'll move on to downtown parking.
Okay, if you can go to the next slide, please. This slide summarizes the revenues and expenditures in the downtown parking enterprise fund. So first, let me alert council to another column that we've added here, and I want to explain this. You'll see the first four columns are the same. That's posted online in the budget book, and also consistent with other departments that have been presenting. And so we've added a fifth column on this slide, and the next slide's going forward to represent what the revised revenues and expenditures should be compared to the second year of the two-year plan. And what it does is it takes into account the lower revenue projections due to not reducing the free complementary period. The second year of the two-year plan had assumed that the complementary period, the free period, would actually go away. That was what was included in the second year of the plan, with the understanding that that was kind of a placeholder. It was a placeholder, knowing that now, where we are today, and then going forward, we would have, staff would have to present a plan, like an alternative plan to actually move us forward. And so now that we know that that is not going to occur based on recent guidance that we received from the city council, we wanted to make sure that we clearly articulated what sort of the starting place is for their revenue and expenditure budget. And as you can see, the base budget, this revised plan, that fifth column, shows a deficit of $3.8 million. So now let's go on to the next slide, which shows the detail of the downtown parking funds revenue over the past couple of years and going forward. You can see that the revenue is growing, but as noted on prior presentations, the amount of revenue coming in in fiscal year 24 is actually lower than what is the current budget. Again, projecting growth next year, but again, not enough to cover their ongoing expenditure and capital investment that is required. Again, we had assumed that that subsidized period would go away, and as we know, that is not being planned going forward. It's also important to note that the city administrator's recommended budget, that fourth column, included the additional revenue assumption if the paid on-street parking and the other proposals in staff's proposal were to be approved. And now that we know, based on council's feedback and direction last week, that we are now moving into a different direction, it is important to note that there will be revenue implications because of that. And so we will walk staff, we will walk the city council through that in the next couple of slides. On the expenditure side, similar to what other departments are experiencing, they have increased costs for salaries, benefits, pension, allocated costs. A vast majority of their transactions for revenue are on credit cards, and so their credit card processing fees go up, their utility costs to run and maintain the facilities. There is a little bit of savings that is noted due to the moving of janitorial services from in-house, and then there's some deferred capital projects that have, that has been a mechanism, that has been a strategy to help balance their budget over the past couple of years. But as of now, staff is proposing to move forward with a number of capital projects, which we'll talk about on the next couple of slides, due to not wanting to defer, not wanting to continue to defer the renewal and the maintenance that is required to maintain those facilities so that they can operate and function appropriately. So this slide summarizes the council direction that staff received last Wednesday at the special meeting, and so just to reiterate, direction was given to consider employee passes, local passes, consideration of consideration of cost savings if owning and maintaining the hardware could be considered, or consideration of using other funding sources, adjusting the 90-minute free period in garages and surface lots, and 75 minutes free parking on the street, and then also not considering paid street parking. And so now I would like to present a slide on each of these recommendations so that council is aware of what the preliminary implications are financially for each of these recommendations. First, on downtown employee passes and permits, you can see that the employment permits are currently between $140 to $165 a month. There could be a proposed reduction, potentially to $70 a month. And if that were to occur, staff is projecting a revenue loss of approximately $800,000 if that were to occur. On the next slide, we'll talk about local passes. We know that there is a strong interest in the community for potential local discounts and local passes. They could be aimed and targeted for some of the underutilized garages, which may have a minimal impact potentially. The concept could be the heart of state, and it could be around a $300 annual or a $30 monthly, which is a pretty reasonable and competitive rate. By implementing such a pass, staff is projecting a potential revenue loss of approximately $700,000. So now we'll move on to the next recommendation from council. This was to consider potential cost savings for not owning various equipment related to some of their capital, like the revenue control system, and consider implementing more of like a license or having it be a leased equipment. That is absolutely something that staff will look into. It is important to note that typically for this type of equipment, it comes with a revenue-sharing agreement. So that may not be a favorable financial arrangement. However, staff will continue to research this and come back to council with their recommendations going forward. The next slide talks about potential alternative funding sources for some of their programming and also some of their capital projects. Direction from council was to do that as of last week. This slide lists those potential alternative funding sources that we have been able to analyze over the past couple of days. First, this is one that we talked about last week. Council could consider using Measure C funds to fund their capital. It's appropriate use of Measure C funds. It is absolutely an alternative for you to consider. That could be up to the $2.8 million planned capital investment for fiscal year 2025. Next, the general fund could be a funding source for their state street plaza support and maintenance work. This is definitely considered a general fund-type expenditure, and so the general fund could pick up the cost of this program, these programs going forward. Also, Measure B, which is the creeks money that comes from the 2% TOT rate, and also the clean communities programs, that is, that comes from the solid waste fund, which is primarily the Marburg franchise agreement. Those are two funding sources that could be, that could be options for council to consider to also fund the enhanced state street plaza litter and also the spot cleaning contract that we have. And the total amount of those costs could range up to close to $500,000. And then finally, there may be some federal transit funds that could be used for some future downtown shuttle needs, but that will have to be researched a little bit more thoroughly. And so up next is the recommendation for actually increasing the time for the complementary period at the garages back up to 90 minutes, and then also maintaining the 70 minutes free for the on-street parking. It is important to note that the last time that the complementary period was 90 minutes in the garages was actually back in 1999. So it has been lower for the past 25 years. And so we would be going back up to where it was many years ago. There's a lot of information on this slide, but I'll just highlight the budget implications, which is what we're focusing on today. The potential loss of revenue due to increasing the complementary period from 75 minutes to 90 minutes would be approximately $1.4 million. Next slide, please. And so again, just to confirm, we received council direction last week that we will, that staff will no longer be pursuing any processes or information for paid on-street parking at this time. But staff will continue to work on options for council to consider at a future time, which may be able to address issues and options for low-income, working parents, locals, residential parking, congestion, and I'm sure there are others. So staff will continue to work on options for future council consideration. And so now I just wanted to summarize, after presenting the financial, potential financial impacts for the recommendations and direction that council gave staff last Wednesday, I wanted to summarize that the additional reduced revenue, if all of those recommendations were to be approved, would be approximately $2.9 million. And so then the ending reserve balance in the fund would actually get, would get worse because that would be a loss of additional almost $3 million of revenue. And so then the projected ending reserve balance would be a negative fund balance of $5.6 million. And so that is obviously a troubling situation that may require a general fund transfer. It may require, if the alternative funding sources were to be approved by council, it may have some programmatic and operational impacts on the clean community program and/or creeks for their planned programming because they have that money programmed as well. And so I just want to counsel to be aware of the potential implications of that. This slide here summarizes their capital. This was presented in detail at last Wednesday's meeting, and so I won't talk about it in any detail. But again, there are other funding sources potentially for these projects other than the enterprise fund. And then finally, we talked about reserves. On this reserve slide, staff felt it was important to go out a couple of years. And this is the same slide that staff presented last Wednesday. Again, that fiscal year 2025 projection is, was based on sort of what is in the city administrators' recommended budget, sort of without the complementary period. And so as I just presented, if all of the recommendations were to be approved, it would decrease that bar even further to around the $5 million number. So that would obviously have an impact going forward as well if all else stays equal. So that concludes my slides.
Okay, we'll come back to council for questions, Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. So first, wow, really fast turnaround from less than a week and asking to bring these back and really thorough with the numbers and very clear. So thank you. So since last week, I'll speak for myself, I've been thoroughly educated on Measure B and how we are not to touch Measure B. And I actually think it's not a bad thing to bring that up every 10 years or so and have the community remind us of what that's for. But I would just want to ask specifically so that we're all hearing from our own staff sort of about Measure B, and then I see that it's Measure B slash clean communities. So maybe we could have more detail on that.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, yes, so Measure B was the ballot initiative in 2001 that was passed by supermajority to fund water quality and creek restoration projects. It's a 2% TOT adder, as you're aware. And when it was voted into being, a creeks advisory committee was formed, and that advisory committee is sort of the stewards of the funds, if you will. That advisory committee developed a set of funding guidelines that have been voted on now three times by council. So first in 2002, again in 2009, and then essentially again in 2013 when a similar idea was floated. Those funding criteria do stipulate pretty explicitly that any funding should go to new or enhanced water quality projects. So in the case of this work, since we're already funding it, it does not currently meet the funding criteria. Council would need to revise those criteria and presumably run it through the creeks advisory committee in order to do that. The reason that clean community is up there is because a lot of the work is litter cleanup and spot cleaning, which is something that the clean community division, formerly the environmental services division, does already citywide. So that is a very reasonable use of those funds. Again, it's a small amount compared to the need for downtown parking, but it is something that we can offer and would love to discuss more.
Thank you so much for offering that up. And I'd like to, for myself, formally rescind my suggestion that we looked at Measure B and now they're, we're not going to use it and move on. So I just, if there's comment on that, that's my own position there, too. And then a question, I suppose for now that's my own. Oh, I did have another question about the heart of state and local passes and employee passes. So again, really, really appreciate looking at this. So, and the current staff employee passes, it has a range there? So is there a range for staff passes at this, at this point?
Yeah, so Mayor Rouse, councilmembers, then, right now downtown parking permits or employee parking permits for our downtown lots do have a range. So they go on the very low end from $40 at the Creo commuter lot. But again, with that lot being slated for redevelopment, that program will be phasing out, all the way up to the highest end, which is $180 a month, which is for the private basement area of Lot 9. So those are assigned spaces. It's different than the rest of our parking permits. But most of our parking lots, including City Lot 2, where we'd be proposing this, they run $165 a month. So this estimate assumes that all of those permits would obviously turn into the $300 permit, in addition to many of the permits that we also offer at Lot 9 and Lot 10 because presumably people would want to have that deal. So that revenue assumption includes the sort of migration of those customers out of our monthly permit program and into the locals' pass permit.
Thank you. And then the employee passes, it's like a pretty big reduction down to $70 a month, which I appreciate looking at that. But what if it was $100 a month or in a range of 70 to 100? Or how was the $70, was that like sort of the minimum of what could be handled or?
So Mayor Rouse, Councilmember Sneddon, that's a good question. So the way we arrived at $70 initially was that is what we charge currently at our Cota commuter lot. So again, those two commuter lots are really intended to support, you know, the workforce and particularly hourly workforce or lower-income workforce. So we felt that that was a good benchmark, particularly since historically the Cota commuter lot has been our most popular lot for permits. It's obviously less since Cota, but typically, you know, we'd have anywhere in the range of 350 to 400 permits sometimes issued in that lot. So given that, it seems like a comfortable price point for our customers and for that particular population. We felt that that was a good sort of benchmark to start with and also represented a very significant reduction from what most customers are paying right now.
Thank you for taking it so seriously and bringing forward some real options. Really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And then I have a question for, I guess, the finance department there. So that, I mean, this structural deficit, and we talked about it when it was the special meeting, but Slide 79, I mean, this is the only fund that looks like this. I mean, the other ones have, they appear like the reserves or above the policy target. And so if this is not an enterprise fund or seen that way, does that change how we even talk about this in terms of what a reserve target is or that we would even need reserves in this way from this particular fund if we're really sort of dispersing the operations into other funds?
Councilmember Sneddon, thank you for that question. It does change the way that we talk about reserves for the downtown parking operation. It does do that. If council were to take an action to basically fold the entire downtown parking fund into the city's general fund, then it becomes part of general fund operating expenses like police department, fire department, libraries. And so what it would do with those expenses and the revenues would come into the general fund, it would actually increase the amount of general fund reserves because the expenditure budget would go up. And then because there is not adequate direct revenue to cover the downtown parking expenses, that means it would have, would require general fund support, just like the police department, just like the fire department. And so it would become another function of the general fund. So that's how it would be treated.
Thank you so much. That makes perfect sense to me. Thank you.
Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sir, could I pull you back? I'm sorry. I'm going to apologize because I was writing notes while then I realized you guys were on the question that I wanted to ask, but I don't know. So the $70, ending up with a projected $800,000 revenue loss, is that just simple math on, based on how many you sold this year versus how many you would sell at $70? Or is there also some money in there that people are paying market rate and they jump on the $70 where they were paying more because they were paying market rate?
Certainly. Mayor Rouse, Councilmember Jordan, so there's a simple math component to it of just converting our existing subscribers to that $70 a month permit. But then there is a little bit of change in behavior that I believe is included. I can ask Megan to come up if you want more details on that.
Just a little.
Yeah, yeah, it's not, you know, it's difficult to, it's difficult to discern exactly how much additional, how many additional subscribers we'd get at that rate. As I mentioned earlier, we do offer a $70 permit, a month permit currently. Granted, it's only in one specific lot, so it's not necessarily going to work for somebody who might, you know, be at the opposite end of downtown for their employment, you know, but we wouldn't necessarily assume that we'd be getting a whole lot more subscribers than we currently have with that $70. But we would hope that we would.
Okay. And then why such a big difference between a local pass and an employee pass per month? So how'd you get to, I mean, 30 is like, you might as well pay me to come downtown.
Sure, that's a great question as well. And as was acknowledged, this is, was a quick turnaround item. So, you know, what we did basically was look at what the waterfront does with its harbor pass, the parking pass that you can get down there for a low flat fee every year, and tried to figure out if there was something comparable to that that we could be able to do for downtown, which is why we took a look at Lot 2, which is right in the middle of the downtown area. It's also the parking lot where we have the greatest access capacity currently. And we threw a number at the wall at that point. So that could be adjusted, certainly. But that was a place to start for a conversation and getting those revenue estimates that you were requested.
Fair enough. Thank you. Then Mr. DiMartini, well, maybe it's you too, sir, so one of you. So we talked a little bit about this transition from tickets, some other word for that, to collection something, some other word for that, right? I'm forgetting what it was, so.
The enforcement, the enforcement action, like the notice.
From a police officer ticket to a collection item or something. I'm sorry.
Fee versus citation?
Maybe. Okay. And so does, does all of this include also some rosy picture on increasing revenues that would stay with you based on that because you'd somewhat control your own destiny on enforcement rather than relying on police department? Is there any good news in this, too? Or did you just not get too rosy about it and just paint the bad news?
Councilmember Jordan, I'll start. I appreciate that question. So the enforcement revenue stays within the police department. So that would be a general fund revenue that's within the police department operating budget.
Even if it went to this second type?
Councilmember Jordan, I believe that is correct, but I will ask Sarah to chime in. Please, thank you.
Certainly. Mayor Rouse, Councilmember Jordan, so the proposal that we discussed last week that involved having downtown parking staff issue fee collection notices the way that the waterfront staff does was associated with the on-street parking proposal. So if we're not proceeding with that, which has been the direction from council, then we wouldn't be proceeding with having parking staff do any of that revenue collection.
There's no role there out on the street?
Correct. If we were, then yes, the initial, if it's paid before it becomes a parking citation, then yes, that revenue would come back to downtown parking. But because again, we're not proceeding with that plan, that wouldn't be a part of this.
Just because they're not here today, so I can get away with this till I try and drive out of the lot, is there any sense in talking about that type of relationship happening on the street itself rather than just, or, I'm sorry, on over, I don't know. I guess it's all controlled by the gates, right? Everything we're talking about, right?
So everything that we're talking about right now, again, absent a street parking proposal, would be controlled by the gates. An alternative where, you know, we could look at doing the fee collection model would involve, you know, and again, I know that this council does not want to proceed with on-street parking, but if we did want to do, say, a 75-minute free period, and then instead of getting a ticket, we could have a paid parking option after that, then that's something that we could enforce via downtown parking staff rather than the police department. But as long as they are enforcing the vehicle code or regulation, then that would need to be the police department.
Okay. Thank you. Keith, and then I just rolled by that slide on Measure B. I would share the opinion on Measure B that no way, no how, also, the old Measure B. So, and then the last slide you had on. B. So, um, and then the, the last slide you had on the, on the red, the red bar graph down in the negative, you could also phrase that as what you really need next year is just to the zero line, right? Because you're showing this actual, like, the money you need to go get is to actually make it whole for what we need to spend plus reserves, making the reserves back to the potential level. But really, the immediate need is just to fund down to the zero line and hopefully not need any reserves or come back after that and ask for money that would come from the reserves normally, right?
Councilmember Jordan, it is staff's opinion that the bare minimum requirement is to at least have money in the fund so that it's not negative. That would be staff's recommendation for the bare minimum requirement.
Okay.
The current policy is the reserve policy. And so that reserve policy is twenty-five percent operating reserves for their operation and, which includes their disaster, um, assumption, right? Um, the downtown parking fund did incur expenses related to recent storms. Uh, it is important that they have money in the bank to continue to operate and have capital investment. And so that is the council policy, which is the target.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mr. Friedman.
Uh, thank you. Kind of following up with, uh, councilmember Jordan, just a clarification. The parking enforcement, uh, so we start having tickets, uh, currently in the, in the current configuration where it's the police department doing it. Do we, does that revenue go to the police department or does it go into the general fund? I got a little confused from one of the answers.
No problem. Councilmember Friedman, happy to clarify. So the enforcement revenue goes into the police department operating revenue line and to their revenue budget. And the police department is a general fund department. So it does come into the general fund in the police department budget.
The reason I asked for clarification is that if we were to start looking at other ways to fund the entire department or entire downtown parking where it would become a general fund department, those funds, they may be available because they would be part of the general fund. They wouldn't be just strictly taken off the top and allocated to the police department.
Councilmember Friedman, I'm not sure I understand that question, but I, just if I, if I may, the parking enforcement revenue for the police department is, is spent on funding police department operations. So similar to.
It would stay there and then that would, that would decrease some of the other general fund support that they would need later because they're increasing that. So.
Councilmember Friedman, that, that is correct.
Okay. I understand it now. Thanks. Um, and so then getting into additional enforcement, are we able to, are these numbers able to look at with the increase to the ninety minutes with the, with the hope that more people would come downtown and stay a little bit longer? Um, with the, the knowledge now that we have the additional enforcement, would that put more people in the garages? So the ninety minutes, how did you account for that? Was it just, we, we didn't count for any increase in people, uh, because of enforcement? Or what, what do you base the numbers off of? Because hopefully that delta would shrink if you're doing more enforcement and people realize they have the ninety minute.
Um, Mayor Rouse, councilmember Friedman, um, the way we, we didn't completely factor street parking into that one, um, because at seventy-five minutes, uh, there, there, the street is already kind of overparked. Um, people are probably going to be staying there without any changes happening on with street parking. Um, with ninety-minute parking in the garages, we did not account for an increase in revenues or, or in parkers, uh, who are paying parkers because, uh, likelihood is that they will leave within the ninety minutes. Uh, so we actually accounted for a ten percent decrease in paying parkers after the ninety minutes.
Ten percent decrease, even with the potential that there would be more enforcement on the streets so they might come in?
I will, yeah. I apologize. Thank you.
Come to that determination.
Mayor Rouse, uh, councilmember Friedman, uh, again, Megan has done all the calculations on this, so I appreciate her work on this. Uh, but when, when we're talking about, uh, changes on the street to seventy-five minutes, uh, I would point out that, um, most of the streets are either seventy-five or ninety minutes or fifteen minutes currently in the central business district. Uh, we have done parking surveys, uh, most recently, I want to say back in March, um, you know, just, just quicker ones, but to determine, you know, how full the blocks were and how long people were staying. And the majority of people, even with those existing parking restrictions, are still staying in excess of that posted time period. So, you know, seventy-five to ninety minutes, we would not really expect to see any parking behavior change because people are already staying longer on the street. That's just the nature of the way our enforcement system works, uh, because we have to go around and, uh, and, and mark the car or note the car the first time and then come back a certain time period later. You know, the nature of that is that it's a little bit squishy. And so, you know, if you get there right after the parking enforcement officer has, has just come by to mark tires, you might be able to park for several hours without getting a parking citation. And so, uh, the reality is that, uh, most people already do park longer than that on street. So, um, we wouldn't expect those changes to shift behavior.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have for now. Thanks.
Ms. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. DiMartini, during COVID, we had an increase of TOT taxes, correct?
Councilmember Gutierrez, for the, for really two years, once COVID began, we had a, a dramatic decline in TOT revenue. And then right after that, when the sort of people started to feel more comfortable traveling again before maybe getting on an airplane, we had a really robust recovery of TOT revenue. People driving to Santa Barbara, staying in our hotels, the, the occupancy increased substantially and also the average daily rates. And so that was around two years post-COVID where we got back up to sort of our new baseline level.
Okay. And did we see an increase in revenue in parking at that same time? And the reason I'm asking this question is because I know, you know, in past presentations, COVID, um, affected the budget for parking. So I just want to understand if there was a correlation there.
Certainly. Mayor Rouse, councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez, um, the short answer is no. Uh, so the, um, uh, occupancy obviously dropped very substantially when, uh, when we were in sort of the thick of COVID and then has rebounded as, you know, the general economy and activity has picked back up. Uh, there is still, uh, there has been a durable change in the way that people work. Uh, with the shift to work from home, we haven't seen that sort of office daytime population come back yet. We have seen people come back for entertainment. So when we look at, at nights and weekends, those are still fairly robust. Those have recovered much more strongly. So it, it's very difficult to, uh, to sort of disambiguate the, or to sort of separate the different, uh, the different impacts, whether something was COVID-related or not. Uh, we also had, um, we, we also had an issue where during COVID, uh, because we had to lay off all of our hourly staff and we had to raise the gates and, and not be charging for parking during that time, obviously, uh, for the first three months. It took a solid two years for us after that closure to get our staffing back to the level where we could even staff the parking lots for all the hours that we needed to staff. Uh, we still do not staff as much as we did prior to COVID. So, um, yes, revenues have increased, but that's been conflicted, it's been compounded or it's been, uh, uh, you know, that's also been affected by, uh, our ability to staff and to collect those revenues and by the revenue changes, uh, that we have made, the two changes to the hourly rates that we've made. So, um, yeah, if you just look at, at the, at the number and if you were to look at the graph, yes, our revenues are increasing. Um, but there are a lot of reasons for that. Uh, our occupancy is not increasing.
Okay. Thank you for that. And this is for Mr. DiMartini again. Um, council recommendation to change the, the minutes from the lots and the on-street parking, that's going to create an extra burden on the negative of the budget? And what's the total amount that will add to the?
Yes, councilmember Gutierrez, thank you for that question. Uh, this slide, seventy-five, talks about the financial impact of increasing the complimentary period up to ninety minutes. In that second bullet, uh, staff has an initial projection that it would be a loss of revenue of approximately one point four million dollars.
Extra?
Yes.
It's going to add into the debt that it already exists?
It will increase the deficit by one point four million dollars. That is correct.
How long does it take to gain back the, a one point four million dollars in parking? How long does it take for, for that revenue to come back?
Councilmember Gutierrez, I'm really not sure I could answer that question because there are so many factors associated with that. It really depends on all of the other recommendations that council has, um, directed staff to consider. It depends on what council ultimately approves during the budget deliberation meeting when they vote on each of the recommendations and what ultimately gets adopted in the budget. And so I'm really not sure that staff can answer that question at this time.
So if we would keep the minute rates to what it is now, but add on the, the new, you know, fees for staff and local permitting, what would be sort of the balance for that, for the parking department?
Councilmember Gutierrez, I'll do my best to come up with an approximation. So if we did not change the complimentary period, that would not be a reduction of revenue of one point four million. And so going to slide seventy-seven, um, that means that instead of reduced revenue of two point nine, it would be a reduced revenue of one point five. Just simple kind of back-of-the-envelope calculation. Right?
And then, um, on, thank you for that. And then on slide seventy-four, the federal transit fund for a future downtown shuttle. We don't, um, we don't have, I mean, downtown is closed and is, could you just give the public more information on, on that fund? And is it, you have a bullet item here because of the possibility of opening up state and just the conversations we've had here on council?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse, councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez. Uh, again, I want to prompt that this was put together in very short, uh, order. Uh, it is important to note that the shuttle is returning, uh, in a, for, in a one-time form, uh, with, I believe, federal funds. And I'm not, I'm not, I cannot speak on behalf of MTD that has secured the funding to bring the shuttle forward in a limited for both the waterfront and the downtown shuttle this summer. However, it's a really good opportunity for us to look at alternate funding sources that are more sustainable into the future.
Thank you. And, Mr. DiMartini, just for clarification, if we didn't touch the general fund and we would just use Measure C and, um, some money for, from clean communities, which it was a go from sustainability, how much of the deficit from parking would that cover?
Councilmember Gutierrez, if council took an action to use Measure C funding for downtown parking's capital and they leveraged the clean communities funding for their plaza enhancement and spot cleaning work, that would, um, basically move approximately three point two million, three point three million dollars onto other funding sources. And so that would have a positive impact on their deficit. They would, they would still have a deficit and they would still be, they would still have a negative fund balance, but it would be less.
Do you know the total amount?
It would be around probably between two to two point five million dollars. Just again, back of the envelope.
Okay. And my last question. Oh, my God, I lost it. Oh, I remember. Uh, Measure C, it's quite a, a large amount of money. And I'm just curious, if we would take that amount of money from Measure C, would any, any projects or any immediate community needs would, how would it impact Measure C?
Councilmember Gutierrez, thank you so much for that question. There would likely be an impact on, um, one or multiple of the projects that has already been programmed to get Measure C funding in fiscal year 2025. Staff would have to evaluate that and really get back to you and, uh, with a staff recommendation about which projects may have to have reduced funding. Uh, I'll, uh, I will also mention that staff, in preparation for the budget, we reviewed all of the projects that have received prior year appropriation from Measure C, and we were able to determine that multiple projects, we were able to de-appropriate either a portion or all of the funding due to project delays or just change of scope or change of direction. And so there is a little bit of capacity in Measure C. I don't know that we have enough, though. And so, um, staff would have to get back to you on which projects staff would recommend to either reduce, um, funding or make some other adjustment.
I would like that information. Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, so let's say we were to approve and move forward with staff recommendations about raising the parking fees and implementing on-street parking meters. Would it be possible at all to allow a certain time of the year to be free parking? So let's say December, when we're having a drop in, uh, retail and restaurant fees, just to encourage more of locals to go downtown?
Certainly. Thank you for that, uh, councilmember Gutierrez through the mayor. We could certainly look and we will continue to look at what sorts of different promotional things we could do in order to bring people downtown. I would caution against, you know, just a blanket holiday like a month or something like that, just because we'll likely lose significant staff if we're not able to schedule them regularly. And as I noted before, it takes us a very long time to recover from those staffing losses. So it wouldn't just be about the loss of revenue for that month, which would total roughly a million dollars for, for a month, but it would also be, uh, ongoing loss as we're not able to fully collect revenue at other times. Um, however, uh, you know, certainly, and again, I didn't know if, I, I don't know if, uh, you intended to ask about street parking, but that's something where we could certainly do a holiday. Uh, we could do, you know, historically in the past, we've done free parking for the holiday parade, uh, you know, other events like that we could absolutely look at doing or, you know, a free weekend or, or things like that. So.
So even with the increased fees, that wouldn't generate enough funding to cover a month of free parking?
Uh, no, it would not, I don't believe. Uh, we would again have to go back and, and sort of do the math, but we would also have to take into effect, um, or excuse me, take into account what that, uh, sort of knock-on effect would be from again pausing staffing for that amount of time. So.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Thanks very much. Um, I'm not in the know-how, know-way camp for, oh, Mr. DiMartini?
Mayor Rouse, I'm, if I may, I just wanted to kind of close out the downtown parking conversation just so that council is, um, clear about next steps. And so at the budget deliberation meeting in two weeks on June fourth, staff will list the recommendations that council directed staff to come back with, um, the specific recommendations that we itemized today. We will show the, the loss of revenue implications for each of those items. So the council can vote on each of those items individually on the June fourth meeting. We will also list the, um, the request and the recommendation to move the downtown parking enterprise fund into the general fund. We'll list that as a specific item. By then, I'm hoping to have a little bit of information about just financially from our auditor, wh- what it will take to actually do that and the implications of, of doing so. And so staff will be prepared to provide that information at the budget deliberation meeting on June fourth. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, I think there are no further questions on this one, so we'll move into the next section, please, which is water.
Mayor Rouse, uh, we're just, we're about halfway through the presentation and so staff was going to maybe suggest taking a five or 10-minute recess.
Okay. Very good. Um, very good. Why don't we reconvene at twenty of, please?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse and council members, members of the public. We are going to now cover the water department, which is part of Public Works and Enterprise Department. Just as a reminder, at the top of this section, that the enterprise departments do not receive tax funding overall and they are self-funded by the fees that they charge. So FY '24 projections do include all the operating maintenance projections and the revised budget for the capital program. And so that's why you're going to see a jump in the expenditures for FY '24 from FY '23 is because of those included multi-year projects that get carried over. They do, the water department does use their reserves strategically to minimize increases to rates. And they do plan to cover the council policy target by FY '29, which we will see in a subsequent slide. And also the revenues do include the proposed fee and rate increases that finance committee and council have heard about in prior meetings. The Water Commission, Finance Committee and Council have been prevented with all of those rate increases are included on the, the fees and service charges line here. And other revenues include energy savings, which are very volatile based on the wetness of the year. And also the Kachuma operations maintenance refund was included in FY '23, which is why you'll see a jump in the other revenues to much higher and then it settles down to something a bit more normal. But again, that can be very different depending on the wetness of the year. FY '23 was incredibly wet. We do have expected increases to input costs. Infrastructure is nearing the end of its life as well and that is constantly needing replacement. Special projects are down a bit. They, we are refining our budgeting methods as we go, as I have mentioned previously. And the city is not planning to purchase water this year. Other expenditures in FY '23 that you see there are for an amortization expense for software, which is a year-end expenditure that accounting makes as an adjustment. So it's kind of like depreciation expense. It's non-cash expenditure, but it is included in FY '23. So you will see that adjustment coming at the end of FY '24. As for fee changes, you will see the fee changes here, 5% increase to fees. 5% increase to fees and a proposed rate increase of 10.5% annually for FY25 and 26, and FY27 and 28 with a 10% annual fee. Again, these have been to Water Commission, Finance Committee, and Council. And the fees are included in the revenues in this proposal, and that should be adopted on June 11th. There will be a rate hearing subsequently on June 25th, at which point this will be a point for discussion. If there are changes to the rates at that time, we will make an adjustment to the budget. Water capital for this adopted year and for the upcoming year is fairly stable. This is on a schedule. The largest portion of it is the main replacements. They do about the same amount of work each year, but the costs are going up approximately 2% or 6 miles, which looks like 60 blocks or the distance from going from the harbor to about where Modoc and Mission meet, so where state turns into Hollister. They do that amount of replacement every year. There are 300 miles of network in the city, and that's roughly from here to Sacramento. This year, an achievement is that they did have a full deployment of advanced metering infrastructure, and more than 10,000 customers have signed up as of early May, and staff will be working to sign up more customers in FY25. This water reserve slide, again, looks a little bit different. It's more like the slide for downtown parking. We felt that it was important to stay consistent with the presentations that council and the public have seen thus far. And also, water is, their rates are partly dependent, and there is an interdependency between the rates and the reserve. So we wanted to make sure that that was understood. Water Department will be dipping into the reserves with the rate increases that they're imposing, and it's going to be about 20% dip below policy in 2026 with a trend to replenish it by 2030. And these projections do take into account some upcoming expenditures, such as the Vic Trace reservoir replacement, which was approved at last week's council meeting. That was approximately $5.4 million. And a further $1.45 million adjustment from Q3 that was, or third quarter, that was for desalination repairs due to the landslide. And that is a disaster-related expenditure, which may be fully reimbursed by FEMA and CALOES combined, but there is a delay in receiving that money. It's also important to recognize that these reserves do include the contingency capital disaster and rate stabilization required by bonds. And with that, we'll take any questions about water?
Any questions from council? Ms. Sneddon?
Just a quick one. So our water portfolio is confirmed to be the most diverse in the state. And I'm just wondering if you could comment, maybe Mr. Hagmark, on the volatility of that, or those markets, or in terms of the budget? I know we have enough water depending on those, but does it impact the budget?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon. That is always one of the challenges. Managing a diverse portfolio does come with costs, and especially during times like this. We do set aside money in our various JPA agencies, Kachuma Operation and Maintenance Board, and Central Coast Water Authority, to be able to adapt, should this year be dry, to whether or not we're delivering water from those various sources. So it does lead to a little bit of volatility in here, and we've tried to not be ultra-conservative in our budgeting, but also build in enough that should we find ourselves in a really dry year, we're able to pivot without having to go back to the rate pairs for more money.
Thank you.
Any further questions on this section? Thank you very much. We'll move on to the next, oops, Ms. Gutierrez has a question.
So, Mr. DiMartini, I think, this question. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Increasing the water rates to the 5% in the future, would we have an excess of revenue increasing it now?
Councilmember Gutierrez, just to clarify, staff is proposing rate increases for utility billing rates of 10.5% for the next couple of years. The 5% fee increases, not the rates, is fees that the Water Department charges for a variety of other types of services, not the actual rate for usage. So they're different, they're different fees for services, and then there's the rates for the actual usage. The best way to answer that question, probably, if I can ask Ms. Lucick to pull up Slide 87. There are planned revenue increases associated with both the rate increases and the fee increases. And what's important to note is that those, the additional revenue is planned to be spent on their operating cost, to operate the facilities and deliver clean drinking water to this community, but also their capital investment. And that's really shown here in this graph, where they have a very robust planning process to model the impact on their reserves. And so they're actually going to be dipping below their reserve policy during the next couple of years, but at the conclusion of fiscal year 2029, will have reached back up to their reserve level. So the best way to just, to answer that question is, they will have increased revenue, but that revenue is going to be invested in the infrastructure.
Any further questions on this? Thank you. We'll move on to wastewater.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor. As you noted, we will be talking about wastewater now. As you see, overall, the revenues are including the proposed rate increases. Again, water and wastewater do both have rate increases that you will be hearing about subsequently and be able to discuss later on in June. So these revenues do include those rate increases. And also, again, to remind you that they do have strategic use of their capital reserves to minimize those increases as they can with a plan to recover it per council policy. Here you see a breakdown of the revenues. As I mentioned, with the fee increases, those internal charges that you see are transfers from operations to the capital fund. So that's just taking the money that comes into operations, moving it to capital so that they can spend it there. So that's for planned capital expenditure. That intergovernmental, intergovernmental line that you see in 2024 coming in at 7.4 million, that is from the state revolving fund and not something that we budget for With the wastewater expenditures, again, you see that $5.4 million on the capital equipment and projects. That was the money that was transferred into the fund and then being spent there. Supplies and services are fairly stable, as are most of the other line items. There is a $490,000 increase, decreased rather, of debt from FY25 approved budget due to the removal of a debt service payment for the Braymar Lift Station loan. The debt service payment is anticipated to begin in FY26, and the project has experienced some little delays due to the reviewing, the review scheduling of that loan. So the department has submitted all of the loan information, but it just hasn't been reviewed yet by the lender. The project construction activity is planned, though, for the summer. As with water, there's a 5% increase to fees for wastewater, and also a proposed rate increase of 9.5% annually for FY25 through FY28. With wastewater capital, these are the program, these are the programmed projects for FY24 and FY25. The wastewater, wastewater department would like to point out that they did, that they do plan to begin construction on the Braymar Lift Station rehab that is located near Hendry's Beach, and are planning to award construction for Elastero electrical upgrades within FY25. Again, we have a forward-looking projection of the reserves balance. This, again, as a reminder, is the contingency capital disaster and rate stabilization required by bonds. It also includes debt service in this slide, and they will be dipping a bit in FY28. They are anticipating reducing rates and having additional $2 million in debt service for further work at the electrical, for electrical at the Braymar Lift Station. And with that, we will take questions for wastewater?
Questions for this section? Ms. Gutierrez?
The Elastero project, is that a PLA project?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez, yes, that is a PLA project. It is hoping to go out to bid here soon.
Thank you for that clarification.
All right, good. If there are no further questions for this section, we'll move on to sustainability and resilience.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse and honorable council members. For Santa Barbara Clean Energy, the Santa Barbara Clean Energy Program administers the Community Choice Aggregator, CCA, program that procures clean and renewable electricity on behalf of City of Santa Barbara electricity customers. In this overview, you will see an increase to the FY25 recommended budget in both revenues and expenditures, $10.2 million in revenues and approximately $14 million in expenses. The major highlights are that the fund is maturing, and because the program has quickly reached financial stability, staff is proposing to pay back the general fund advance of $2.2 million in full at the end of FY24. You will see a deficit of $2.1 million in revenues less expenses driven by the payback of general fund advance. However, because the reserves are strong, they are able to pay back the advance to the general fund ahead of schedule out of reserves, which will be replenished vice subsequent activity. Because of the early financial stability of the SB Clean Energy Fund, staff is proposing to execute a planned shift of most personnel and program costs from the Energy and Climate Management Fund to the SB Clean Energy Fund in FY25, centralizing energy and climate staff expenses one year ahead of schedule. Revenues, excuse me, you will see a $9.9 million increase, which represents customer rate revenue. Rates are tied to SCE rates, and revenue increase is driven by both rate increases tied to the electric energy market and by customer participation. There is also a $377,000 increase in use of money and property associated with interest income, and the primary underlying factors of the interest income forecast are prevailing interest rates and the size of the city's portfolio. With interest rates rising, the city's interest earnings inch higher accordingly. In clean energy expenditures, there is an overall recommended FY25 increase of approximately $14 million. Approximately $1.3 million of that increase is related to salaries, benefits, and allocated costs associated with the proposal to centralize most of energy and climate staff and related expenses in the SBCE fund. There is also an $8.9 million increase in supplies and services, of which $8.6 million are for non-contractual services related to power supply costs. In addition, staff are, staff are planning to increase programming funding, which includes customer incentives and rebates in energy and resilience projects in line with council priorities. There is also a recommended increase in special projects associated with outreach and engagement, $6,500 in non-capital equipment, and an increase of $1.9 million associated with the early repayment of the general fund advance, which staff is proposing to pay back in full at the end of FY24, reducing principal and interest costs in FY25 to $0. The clean energy changes, as mentioned in previous slides, is the main recommended changes in FY25 are associated to centralizing energy and climate personnel expenses, payback of the general fund advance, which was originally going to be repaid across FY2025 through FY29, power supply costs, and increased incentive projects and programs. In positions changes, as previously mentioned, staff is proposing to move nearly all of the personnel costs in the Energy and Climate Management Fund to the SB Clean Energy Fund, eliminating the energy conservation allocation that is currently charged to all city departments. In addition, staff proposes to add an administrative analyst, too, proposed in FY24, and this was approved at Q3. For clean energy reserves, this is a relatively new fund, and the fund is maturing, and we are projected to get to our reserve target by the end of this year. Reserves are expected to fall somewhat due to the early payback of the general fund loan repayment. This is expected to increase in subsequent years.
Okay. Do we have questions for this section? Mr. Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question on that changes slide. And power supply costs, I'm just going to give you a chance to say publicly what we talk about all the time. So a couple of years ago, that's, if I'm interpreting this right, so you just anticipated the power, the power part of your role in our bill would be 38 million. And it's obviously, a couple of years, a year goes by, and the reality is it's 47 million, right? And could you talk briefly about why that is?
Absolutely. Mayor Rouse, Councilmember Jordan, there is actually a specific component to power markets that is related to called resource adequacy. This is an insurance policy, so to speak, statewide, to ensure we have enough steel in the ground generating energy to prevent rolling blackouts, if you will. So every load-serving entity, like Santa Barbara Clean Energy, is required to invest in generation projects separate from the power itself. So you can invest in a solar and battery storage project by those electrons and separately by resource adequacy, which is capacity. There are not enough projects in the state for all load-serving entities to meet their requirement. This has created a very competitive market, if you will, and really drove up costs quite a bit. So Santa Barbara Clean Energy, in its nascent form, wanted to comply. We spent a lot of money complying with our resource adequacy obligations. A lot of load-serving entities didn't and took a penalty. But we do project that that's going to continue to increase, and the reason for that is we cannot interconnect projects. The investor-owned utilities control those interconnections, and so there's a bit of attention there that we're working through with the POC.
I guess so, just, you've heard my point before. The point I'll continue to say in this is, you know, if you could go back four or five years, you were a germ in an idea, and now you're a $50 million department, and you're flush at a time when water rates, water rates, parking rates, sales tax initiative, and, but there's a great story with the rise to flush and with flush, you know, to flush as a department. And we need to continue to help you. You need to continue to help us tell that story out there on, on the whole why and the how and the benefit of it, rather than just a entrenched bureaucracy that just is raising rates year over year over year because they have accumulated capital costs or whatever it might be. There's, there's reasons for this, and nobody really listens to the reasons organically, and we need to make sure that we're actually proactively offering the background on those reasons and why it's important to keep on track what the big picture benefit is for the future, okay?
Yes, Councilmember Jordan.
That wasn't a question, I'm sorry.
I do have a response, though. I think what, what's really important to remember about what you just said is that council was very deliberate in its rate-setting policy for Santa Barbara Clean Energy. It's not just set to recoup expenditures, it's actually set to fund climate action, and that is something that is happening throughout this organization, not just in the Sustainability and Resilience Department. So there is an opportunity to look at ways in which this fund could help support those actions.
And I'll just tell you, as you know, even council needs reminding that periodically. So as you know, so I just think, and that, so that we have those talking points continually, and we continue to not have to struggle to proactively support the program, but we're out in front helping you with that.
Thank you.
Ms. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't see any information on capital. I guess I'm going back to the conversation I had with you about, especially in my district, a grant proposal to help the flow of the creeks and where it ends up by Dwight Murphy Field. Is that project anywhere in the future or in this budget?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Councilmember Alejandro Gutierrez. That project sits in the capital program, so that's the Sycamore project. It's not currently slated for funding. We're working collaboratively with the Public Works Department, the Creeks Division, and the Resilience Division to the Resilience Division to try and figure out, and the Parks and Rock Department, to figure out what the project could be. So we do have a grant, I think what you're referring to is our grant from the California Coastal Conservancy Group, which we have extra funds in and are looking to repurpose for some stormwater modeling and remediation. That is planning to move forward, and again, that will work with Public Works to ensure that, you know, it fits, aligns with their stormwater work that they're working on.
And there is money there already to sort of start that.
So we do have the grants. We received 6 million dollars from the California Coastal Conservancy, about 700,000 of it. We're repurposing away from a project that it's no longer needed for and toward the stormwater modeling.
Perfect, thank you.
Very good. Any further questions on this department? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the next, which is...
Thank you, Mayor Rouse and members of council. For Clean Community Sustainability and Resilience, formerly Solid Ways, they manage the Solid Ways utility for City of Santa Barbara businesses and residents, as well as the Clean Santa Barbara program, which implements several neighborhood improvement programs. This overview shows a revenue increase of 1.2 million dollars and a 771,000 dollar increase in expenses. Some of the major highlights for FY25 is that this is the second year of the new large waste hauler contract with Marburg, the waste processing and disposal contract with the county, and county-related landfill costs are increasing. For Clean Community Revenue, there is an overall increase of 1.2 million dollars in revenues, and 1.4 million dollars of that increase are associated with fees and service charges for solid waste fees, public container maintenance fees, program support, homeless camp abatement, among others. There is a 299,000 dollar decrease in intergovernmental related to material delivery agreement. As part of the agreement for the Resource Center landfill with the county, they pay tipping fees for each ton in material delivery. At the end of each year, any surplus reserves held at the county is redistributed to participating jurisdictions. It was a few hundred thousand in the first several years of operation, but will be zeroed this year and in the foreseeable future as the county deals with rising costs. There's also an increase of 23,279 in California State Grant, and the 79,600 dollar increase in use of money and property is related to interest income, with 28,488 in other revenues pertaining to UUT Streets Fund reimbursement. For Clean Community Expenses, there is an increase of 393,293 in supplies and services, an increase of 227 in special projects, an overall increase of 123,406 in staff salaries, benefits, and allocated cost, an increase of 8,563 in noncapital equipment, a 50,000 dollar decrease in transfers associated with a franchise fee repayment, and an increase of 70,000 dollars in capital equipment and projects for computer software over 5,000 dollars, which is for Cartograph CIS integration. For Clean Community Changes, there is a 621,000 roughly variance from the FY25 recommended budget associated with the county agreement costs to run resource centers and related landfill costs. For Clean Community Positions, there are new net positions, and they are shifting allocations of some shared department positions resulting in 1.1 FTE reduction. For Fee Changes, the solid waste rates are increasing 1.9%, and this was proposed with water and wastewater rates. For Clean Community Reserves, the reserve target increased slightly in FY23 after the passage of the citywide reserve policy. We do anticipate meeting the reserve target in FY24, and will use any excess reserves to mitigate future rate increases going forward. And with that, if you have any questions?
Questions for this section? Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to waterfront.
Okay, I'd like to give an update on the budget for the waterfront for fiscal year 2025. We'll start with the revenues and expenditures, and as you can see here, the revenue projections are actually projected to be slightly lower in fiscal year 24 compared to the prior year. There was some softening of some really increased demand that came sort of immediately post-COVID that we talked about a little bit earlier. The recommended budget does assume a little bit of additional revenue going forward, and there are some assumptions built in there in regards to the increased revenue from raising the slip fees, as well as the parking fees. The other main revenue source comes from lease revenue from many of the properties that they own and maintain and manage. The enterprise is going to experience, I'll just jump into revenues here, that's okay? So this slide here itemizes the revenue increases that they are projecting for their various sources. Again, they have three main revenue sources coming from the leases that they hold, parking, and their slip fees. They are seeing a little bit of reduced tenant revenues due to the softening of their economy, and some of the lease revenue that the waterfront realizes has to do, some of it, with the actual economic activity down at the waterfront and the revenue that those businesses actually generate. There is an assumption for increased revenue due to the slip fees and the parking revenues. And there's also, they have a planned additional capital investment program for multiple projects that they are projecting with those additional revenues going forward in fiscal year 25, which we'll talk about in just a couple of minutes. On the expenditure side, you will see that they are expecting to increase their budget by about 1.7 million dollars compared to the second year of the two-year plan. It is definitely noteworthy that the waterfront department in particular, their costs are increasing pretty substantially by allocated costs, primarily the self-insurance fund. There are facilities at the waterfront that are old, that are wood structures above water that have had fire damage in prior years. The cost of maintaining adequate property insurance on many of those facilities has gone up really significantly over the past couple of years, and that will likely continue into years going forward. The deductible increase alone for Sterns Wharf, that one asset, has increased from 250,000 dollars for an incident to 3 million. And so it's really important that we manage our insurance policies at the waterfront facilities in particular. We're also seeing some additional costs related to disasters and storms. The disaster reserves in the waterfront have been used to implement a revetment and direct mitigation related to the January 2023 storms and recent storms in 2024. And those reserves are required to make sure that the facilities are adequate and the people down at the waterfront stay safe. And so those reserves will continue to be utilized until FEMA reimburses them. On this next slide, you will see some of the notable changes. You'll see what is in the second year of the two-year plan for parking rates and the slip fees. The staff recommended budget for parking rates is to increase them by another 50 cents per hour, and that is actually a recommendation that came from the Harbor Commission. When staff presented the budget at the Harbor Commission, that was a recommendation that they made, and staff is recommending to support that. And so that is before you today. It'll show additional revenue of just over 623,000 dollars if that change were to be implemented. Slip fees are also being proposed to increase from a 5% increase, that was in the second year of the plan, to a 10% increase. And so that would generate around 250,000 annually. There is some minor savings from the elimination of a senior property specialist position. Moving on to the position, I just noted the savings that the department will realize from that position going away. There's a reclassification of an existing position, and there are existing vacancies in the department that council should be aware of, and the department is actively working to recruit them. So moving on to the fee changes, this table itemizes what the current fees are in the current fiscal year for parking-related fees and rates, and the slip fees and vessel fees. It also then shows what the proposed rate it was in the second year of the two-year plan, and then what is being proposed now for fiscal year 2025, and then also what the financial impact is if those changes were to be implemented. And as you can see, if the additional rate increases were to be approved by council, it would generate just under a million dollars of additional revenue for the waterfront department. Again, that would be used to fund their operation, but primarily the additional capital investment that they are hoping to accomplish in fiscal year 2025. So talking about their capital, you can see that the department is hoping to invest of about 700,000 dollars more in their capital program compared to the current fiscal year across multiple departments, including marina maintenance and repair work, the fire alarm system, harbor vessel replacements, slip metering programs, roof replacements, really a broad set of capital investment across the waterfront. And the last slide for waterfront is to talk about their reserves, and their reserves is pretty emblematic of the economic activity that occurs in sort of the city in general, being that a lot of tourist-related activity does occur at the waterfront. You will see that their reserves dipped pretty significantly during COVID, fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21. The department also worked very closely with tenants at the waterfront to alleviate some of the burden on their lease payments, and now all of those leaseholders are in compliance with their monthly sort of lease requirements. You can see, once COVID sort of passed and the tourism activities sort of continued, their reserves replenished, which is sort of a natural trend that we would anticipate. But as you can see, going forward into this current fiscal year and next fiscal year, those reserves are projected to decline slightly. Again, it's also really important to note that they do have planned capital in fiscal year 2025, denoted by the complimentary gray column, but they do have additional capital projects they are anticipating in fiscal year 26 and beyond, which, again, will be leveraging the reserves that they have available. I also really want to make sure council is aware that these reserves in particular have been hit hard during the recent storms. Over a million dollars of expenses from the 2023 storm in particular, and then there are additional expenses from cleanup and debris removal and other expenses. So the reserves in the waterfront in particular are necessary for the delay of FEMA reimbursement and other types of reimbursement. We'd be happy to take any questions.
Questions for the waterfront, Mr. Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Come on up. Just one, and that is, I'm going to get the call on the ice house, so can you tell me what the answer is in advance of that it's still not on a capital list? Where is it? How's it functioning? What are we doing?
Yeah, Mayor Rouse, Councilmember Jordan, it's a good question. So we had 650,000 dollars in our capital program in 2022 or '23, I want to say, to replace that ice house completely. We went out to bid at that time, and the bids came in in the range of 1.5 to 2 million dollars, so just far exceeding the money that we had. We've been using that 650,000 periodically over the course of the last few years to replace key components, keep serving ice, kind of repair by replacement, and it's worked pretty well.
Okay.
The ice house was built in the 90s, so it is old, it needs some love, and we've been kind of doing that in incremental fashion, but still being able to maintain ice production.
Okay, perfect. I'll carry that forward. And then let's find another category for those reserves. Until somebody complains that you are hiding something in a category you never used, because clearly in the future, we're going to have calamity after calamity, particularly down waterfront-related with sea rise and worse storms and that kind of thing. So just whatever you had to do, just cut down on that blue and find another category and get it into a gray or a pink, whatever, another color of it. Because clearly, you may have it a year or two, but then you're going to be right back in there going, hit really hard by a million dollars or something. Thanks.
Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you. Along those same lines, so in the sea level rise adaptation plan, and this might be overarching question, there's certain departments that are going to be harder hit or earlier hit than others, and waterfront comes to mind. And I'm just wondering about, along those same lines, if those reserves aren't really available, partly because of just maintenance of what we have, but how much of reserve or where does the funding come from for the long-range sea level rise adaptation planning?
Yeah, Councilmember Stan, that's a great question and kind of top of mind for us at the waterfront and sustainability and residency. We know a lot of work needs to be done down there, even just with the storms that happened in the last couple of years. So basically, from the yacht club to leadbetter is, you know, we were seeing inundation numerous times, so something has to be done along there. We're lucky in the sense that the city was awarded grant funding to kind of study that, and so we're in a little bit of a holding pattern, but my hope is that that study directs and kind of dictates and lets us know some of those costs, and so that we can start getting our heads around how much the waterfront can fund, how much we can go after other lines of funding, because my general assumption is it's going to be more money than the waterfront department solely has to kind of complete those types of projects.
That would be my sense as well. And so that study is focused on just the waterfront at this point?
A portion of it is. It's a citywide study, and so it is looking at all of our other infrastructure, but a lot of it does focus directly on the breakwater, the marina, sort of the coastal inundation on that area. So a big part of it is waterfront-specific.
Thank you. And then the only other question I have is, so where do cruise ships show up on here as a line item? Like I was trying to look at which revenue or...
Yeah, no good question. There's a category called other revenue. They're in there. You can't drill down quite far enough on the online budget tool, but it's kind of four down on the revenue side, other revenues. So at 906,000, that's not cruise ships in totality. Cruise ships make up about 550,000 of that, I believe. The other portion is miscellaneous revenues that we receive from renting rooms and all sorts of different stuff, but the cruise ship portion is about 550,000. And then just to note, there is a corresponding expenditure of 50 to 100,000 dollars that we kind of feed into that program for staff time and services that we book.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure that I see it right, that the, so, and so these projections and the approved budget, those take into account our sort of new guidelines on cruise ship?
Yes, they do. We tried to adjust it to a little bit of a moving target, because we charge based on per passenger. So even though we may know the size of the ship, we don't necessarily know if it has 60% full or 100% full essentially until the day they arrive. They send us their manifest a couple of days before they arrive, and we charge them based solely on that. So even a ship being kind of 30% reduced would result in us receiving 30% less revenue. So it does shift around a little.
Okay, so, okay. It's good to see that it didn't totally break the budget, so I'm happy to see that calculated in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wiltshire, on the self-pay parking system, does that result in a labor savings?
Good question, Mayor. Not per se. We just implemented it fairly recently. You mean the LPR system at the main gate or the self-pay lots?
Just in general, because obviously parking's been a little bit of a hot-button topic these days. And I know that in the past, when we first did the slotted guards, it really didn't because you still had to go out and physically monitor the slot, the spaces. So I didn't know if the new technology, if we've gotten to the point where we actually have quote-unquote self-pay automatic.
There are a lot of benefits to it. The majority of our lots are self-pay, with the exception of Harbor Main Lot and Sterns Wharf Lot, which are kiosk-attended lots. And so as we replace that equipment, the equipment itself is fairly expensive, maintaining it in an ocean environment is fairly expensive. We have reduced our hourly loads slightly. Some of that might have just been due to COVID and kind of tapering down and getting used to a new norm and having a difficulty hiring new hourlies. So we've had trouble hiring hourlies over the last year or two, so we've kind of made do with less. I don't necessarily want to accredit that to the self-pay lots. We still need people out there. There's kind of a lot going on and a lot that they do.
All right, thank you very much. Any further questions for the waterfront? Thank you. All right, we'll move on to special funds. That always sounds kind of cryptic, doesn't it? Who's got the special funds?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members and council. We're going to move on to the special and other funds, which sounds a lot more exciting. There are several funds that are not part of the general fund. They are not enterprise funds, and they are not internal funds, but we do budget for them, and we feel that it is important to bring these pieces forward. Some of these funds are under community development, as listed here, and I'll be going through those in detail. And we will also be following up on the question from last week about the inclusionary housing funding. Library has two special funds, the County Library and Library Grants. Fire has one special fund to report on, which is the equipment rental, or the Equipment Replacement Fund, rather. The Parks and Recreation Group has the CAL FIRE Grant, and Police has only one that should not read Public Works as a second bullet point. They just have the Police Asset Forfeiture and Grant Fund. Public Works, we will be discussing Meuree and Streets, and then Sustainability and Resilience. We'll be speaking about creeks and street sweeping. So I'll start us off with community development. Just as a reminder, today we did speak about the general fund last week. We are just going to concentrate on the special revenue funds today. The revenue for those funds totals 3.5 million for the coming fiscal year. Some detail on those special revenue funds, we have... We have the federal home loan program, which is also known as Home. We'll talk about that in a little detail. The Community Development Block Grant, also heard as CDBG, not to be confused with CBGBs. The City Affordable Housing Grant, PHLA, which stands for the Permanent Local Housing Allocation. And then a miscellaneous funds grant, which you will see that it is not budgeted for in the coming year. And the reason for that is because it is very difficult to predict when those funds might come in and be available. So as they apply, those get adjusted in as presentations to council. And then also our new local housing trust fund. Did I come backwards? I went backwards, excuse me. Sorry about that. So the Community Development Block Grant, our changes are that there is a $60,000 increase to the revenue. I think I just skipped a couple of slides. I apologize. Thank you. That's what I get for having two slide presentations running at once here. The special revenue funds are 3.8 million for the coming year. And the special revenue funds total here that I just went through with the revenues at 3.8 million, as I just detailed them out. This is the expenditure detail, sorry about that. We'll be going through each of these individually. So the Community Development Block Grant, there is a change to it. There will be a $60,000 increase, and the reason is that it's, the budget is originally developed based on what the prior year award amount was. And the official award amount that we received was actually $30,000 less than it was in the prior year. So the department did adjust that to be the actual award amount in 2025. The Home Investment Partnerships Program. This is the federal home loan program. The budget, again, is developed based on the prior year award amount. The official award amount received is $111,000 less than it was in the prior year, and so they adjusted that to reflect it in 2025. There currently isn't any change from the two-year plan. Changes to the City Affordable Housing. There is a community development program specialist that they are requesting. That's half of a full-time employee that will increase the expenditure by $78,000. There is also a decrease in the interest received from the loan repayments of $314,000. And the reason for that is because there was a loan payoff in the prior year, and so they are not going to receive the interest from that loan any longer. And so that reduced the amount of revenue there. PHLA, as a reminder, is the Permanent Local Housing Allocation, and that is from the California Department of Housing. And community development provides that funding, and, excuse me, from the California Department of Housing and Community Development. They provide the funding to local governments in California for housing-related projects and programs that assist with addressing the unmet housing needs of local communities. This revenue was adjusted down to reflect the updated assumption of the anticipated award amount for 2025. It's been decreasing each year, and the recommended budget reflects an anticipated decrease in the award amount from the two-year budget. The Local Housing Trust Fund, which we've already spoken about at the general fund meeting, these are the transfers that we spoke of that are coming into the Local Housing Trust Fund. As a reminder, there was $100,000 from the, in LOFIS coming in. That will be coming in a total of $500,000 over a five-year period at $100,000 a year. So this is the first amount coming in. There is also a transfer from the city attorney's office from the Peony Settlement of $250,000, and that makes up the $350,000 to seed that fund. As promised, we are going over the inclusionary housing. As a follow-up to the questions that were posed on Tuesday, I think it's important to delineate here, there's a little confusion around it, that the inclusionary funding is not its own fund, but it's held as a separate line item as part of the general fund in that reserve. So it's its own line item, so that makes it, so that the funds are restricted for their specific intended use. And this reserve's balance is a budget sheet, a budget sheet item. We only budget for expenditures and revenues, so that's why you're not seeing those funds come in on a separate line. There's some information on the inclusionary housing funding here, and I'm just going to go over it in a spreadsheet format in the next slide to walk you through where that funds have come from and where they're going. So, and again, as a reminder, that Inclusionary Housing Ordinance was designed to encourage development of affordable housing and increase availability, housing opportunities to implement the policies from the housing element of the general plan. And the INLOFIS is that component of the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance that charges the fee as opposed to actually building the onsite affordable housing. So one thing to notice on the left side here is where the fees are being collected. They're unpredictable, and they're not consistent. So as you can see, they came in in 2011, $144,000, and then we had several years that didn't have anything come in, and the fees collected ranged from $48,000 to $245,000. So it's really hard to plan for this. The upside of this is that people are building the housing instead of paying the fee. So, but that's, it's not a very consistent or dependable revenue source. Since 2011, we brought in a little bit over a million dollars in fees collected. On the left, on the right side of the screen, you'll see the obligations on those fees. So we do have the Green Mobile Home Park Grant that we, is from the fiscal year 2022 budget, that's $75,000, and the Habitat Rehab Pilot Program from fiscal year 2023. So that's a total of $125,000 of that million that we had programmed. Additionally, there is an obligation to make those transfers to the Local Housing Trust Fund of a total of $500,000. So there's a total use of that million dollars so far of 625,000. And there is $445,000, approximately $446,000 that are available in LOFIS. So hopefully, that makes it a little clearer where those fees actually are. And with that, we'll take questions.
Okay, questions. Mr. Friedman.
Thank you. Could you pull up slide 128? Just a clarification, the Local Housing Trust Fund, so recommended budget is 350. Where is, if going back to the '23 and the '24, where's the 3 million that's already in there accounted for?
Councilmember Friedman, thank you so much for that question. That was an action that was taken by council a little over a year ago to appropriate a general fund surplus that we had at the time of $2.8 million. That money has been deposited into the Local Housing Trust Fund, but it has not yet been appropriated for any use yet. So that's why you don't see expenditure appropriation at this time. The money is in the fund.
Okay, so it's an expenditure, but the slide says revenue detail. That's what threw me off.
Councilmember Friedman, it is not an expenditure. The money is simply transferred into the fund, and it's ready to be appropriated to spend.
If I may, for clarification, this is the revenues that come in as budgeted each year, and so the amount that came in, I believe it came, did it come in in the current fiscal year? Yes, we transferred it this year. It's possible that it should be showing under the 2024 projections there, but it was just a transfer over, so it's not going to be showing in the 2025 budget. Does that make sense?
If it was, there'd be the '24. That's what threw me off, because I thought it should be in the '24. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you, Mayor Rouse. I guess my first question, slide 134, I don't think I understood the changes that, and the statement that SB, CityNet and SB Act don't, there's insufficient funds to support them at the current levels? That's sort of a big statement. I wasn't sure what to do with that.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, so the PLHA annual award amount has been decreasing. It's a function of real estate activity. I think it's $75 per each real estate transaction, and we've seen the award amount go down every year. And what that statement is basically saying is that, based on the level of funding that we've been giving to CityNet for street outreach services, and that we've been providing to SB Act for the neighborhood navigation centers, that we can't continue to fund it at the current levels that we have been doing. However, some, I have some notes here. The CityNet's contract has been rerouted through home American Rescue Plan funds to make sure that that stays intact, and we do have funding for the Daytime Navigation Center through 2027. But we've been seeing the funds reduced, and in order to maintain service levels, we had to pivot to another funding source.
Okay, thank you. So those, those activities are still funded, just not, I mean, they're currently in this budget, but not through PLHA?
Not through that funding source in fiscal year 2025.
Thank you. That really helps. And then two more questions. One about the inclusionary housing, so I guess slide 137. And I can't remember, I think it was Habitat for Humanity recently, they did their pro forma and found it was going to be like a million dollars to develop one unit, or, tell me, how much, ask it as a question, how much does it cost to develop one unit of housing?
We saw it at the Finance Committee today when a loan was approved to the housing authority who shared that. Is it, would you like to take the question?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse and Councilmember Sneddon. Yeah, at the Finance Committee today, we did have the project from the housing authority, the Bella Vista, which is over 200 North Lacumbria Road, and their estimation for a new build of a unit, which these are actually bigger units, so, you know, one to three bedrooms, but they're estimating it almost 1.1 million.
Okay, thank you. So when I'm looking at this, and help me understand this, I'm looking at from 2011 to 2024, which is, what is that, 13 years? We've collected enough to not even build one unit?
At current rate of building a, one unit, that is correct, yes.
Okay. And has any of it ever been used to build a unit?
No, it has not. The only uses of this fund from the whole time period that you see is on the right-hand side, on the top of what we've programmed, and then what the council has actually allocated for the operating costs of the Local Housing Trust Fund. So that is going to be also coming out for five years, the $100,000.
Okay, so I guess this is, we're not supposed to be asking programmatic questions, I guess, but I think at some point we need to figure out how we access these funds. Like, I'm assuming we're going to talk about increasing the INLOFIS, but it's still not clear how to access them, where they are.
So I can give you a little bit of a quick answer to all that. For one thing, the accessing of those funds, this fund actually is one of our very few that can be used to, all the way up through upper-middle income. It is for development, rehab. There's a lot of different uses that this fund is capable of versus our other funds. And so as you, as you can see, with not using it, we did have the ability to use the funds for the Local Housing Trust Fund that we just newly created. So there is a lot of different options that we can use this fund, so it's not a bad thing to have it, you know, on reserve, because like you can see, Green Mobile Home Park, we had to pay that to the state HCD to be able to get that transferred over to the housing authority. So there are reasons that, you know, are valid to keep this fund, just because it is a very valuable source of funding that's being able to be used in a way, in a lot of ways, that our federal and state funding are reserved and restricted to.
I agree, and thank you. And I think there's even one more on here, which was the, I can't remember the name of the rehab project, Zoco, no.
Yeah, El Zoco.
Thank you.
Yeah, we did work with them for many years, or not many, many months, I'm sorry. And it was their desire at the end to not take us up on those loans for it. So it was, at one point, we were going to allocate that money to them, but they decided to do things differently.
Thank you. So I just want to make sure I'm understanding, so there's, there was a million dollars, and then 2022, there was one project that was $75,000, 2023, one project that was $50,000. So there's a sort of one a year, and they're kind of small.
Just recently, yeah.
Just recently.
Yeah.
And then the rest of these have been transfers, or planned transfers, I guess. There hasn't really been a transfer yet. These are planned for 2025?
Yeah, actually, it was on the previous slides, I think, that the $100,000 did go into the Local Housing Trust Fund.
Okay. So then these are $100,000 a year from these INLOFIS each year, which still leaves quite a bit, like if you're just doing a $75,000 project and transferring $100,000, that's still leaving $700,000 in that fund.
It's available would be 445,000 at the bottom there.
Okay.
And I just wanted to mention...
Well, that's after 2029, though.
Correct, but we did have to commit that for five years for the state to be able to give us the ability to apply for their program. It's for the operating costs of the fund.
Of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Of which fund?
The Local Housing Trust Fund, yes.
Okay. So I'm all for the transfer of the $100,000. So that's not, the question more is, each, each year, I mean, it'll get replenished also, right? So this is written out as if from 2025 to 2029, it's just going to be losing $100,000 a year, and not really losing, transferring to another fund for use. So that 445, that's, that's the net available in 2029. That's not the net available next year or this year.
So that was what I was going to explain, is that there is no certain revenue that comes into this fund. This is all by project, and only certain projects are eligible to pay INLOFIS. So for rental, the project has to be between four and nine units to even be eligible to pay an INLOFIS. Otherwise, they have to develop those units in the project. For ownership, it's from two to nine units that are eligible to pay an INLOFIS. So that is why you're seeing that it's taking so many years to accumulate funding in this. And one of the reasons why we don't actually show it in our budget, because it's not a steady revenue that we can count on, it's all in what comes through our pipeline in planning for the projects, and if they qualify to pay, and also if the developer actually chooses to pay it, or do they choose to develop the unit?
Thank you. This is actually really helpful, because it's, even though it doesn't have like a steady predictable revenue source, it's still a million dollars. And that's, that's sort of available, and as long as it's replenishing at $100,000 a year, it meets the obligations.
No, it, it doesn't, the $100,000 isn't coming into this fund?
Going out.
It's going out, yeah.
But I think I have what I need. Thank you.
Okay, yeah.
Ms. Gutierrez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And LOFIS, so just for clarification, piggybacking on Councilmember Sneddon's question, there is a huge difference in development when the housing authority, you know, our local nonprofits, like People Self-Help, Habitat for Humanity, they built, their cost is a lot larger than if a private developer would have built because of state mandates and just, they have different rules and regulations, right?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse and Councilmember Gutierrez. The cost of developing a unit is pretty much the same for any agency. I'm not too clear as to what maybe your thinking is different for a nonprofit.
So what I'm, I'm thinking about the INLOFIS and just seeing how, you know, it's not consistent, because maybe people are not building, that they're still going through the permitting process. But there is a difference when a private developer builds 40 units from when the housing authority builds 40 units. There is a difference in cost of that project, right?
I wouldn't say the cost so much. I would say that for the housing authority, they basically are developing low-income housing units, and so there is low-income housing tax credit financing available. So that helps to, really helps to basically finance that project, where a private developer doesn't have that option. where a private developer doesn't have that option. Most of the time, they're developing either, you know, market or different levels if they're getting state density bonus and such. But the actual cost of developing a, or building a new unit is pretty much standard throughout the industry.
Councilmember Gutierrez, if I could jump in, I just want to clarify what your question is. Because I, I think what you're asking is like some of the tax credit programs, for example, may be subject to prevailing wage requirements, which would then make the cost of construction more expensive than a private development. Is that, is that what you're trying to get at?
What I, what I would like to see is, you know, we see these gaps in the in-lu fees. I would like to encourage developers to instead of paying, you know, paying the in-lu fees to like, how do we, if they're going to be paying the in-lu fee, you know, I've suggested to, to look at the increase of the in-lu fee because if they pay the in-lu fees, that unit, you know, is throughout the years is just going to increase in the value. And so I suggested let's increase the in-lu fees. But how, my question was like, how do we also incentivize developers to, to develop all those affordable house, units instead of just paying the fees? And so that's why I was asking, like, there is a, a difference between when the Housing Authority builds than when a private developer comes.
Yeah, I, I see what you're saying, yeah. And the reason, or one of the incentives that we've used is by saying that only like, you know, projects from four to nine units are eligible to, to pay that in-lu fee. So that any of the bigger projects, they actually are kind of forced into developing those units.
That 10% affordable units. You mentioned operation costs for other commitments, Local Housing Trust Fund for the years 2025 through 2029. You mentioned operation costs. Can you explain what you meant by operation costs?
Yes, certainly. State Housing and Community Development Department, their program for Local Housing Trust Funds, that's one of their requirements, is that municipalities have to have operating costs for a minimum of five years that are basically committed to that fund to make sure that the operating costs are covered for five years.
Thank you for that clarification. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Harmon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very briefly sort of building off of that last comment. I'm trying to think of how to phrase this question. So I, I have come not to support in-lu fees at all because I don't see the housing being built. To the extent that we were to make a policy decision to get rid of in-lu fees, am I understanding this correctly, that we already have enough money in that fund for our budgeted commitments, and if we got rid of it altogether as a policy concept, there wouldn't be any other implications for the community development budget?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse and Councilmember Harmon. That is correct. What you see up there was our uses already. There's no other commitments besides the five years of operating costs. So we would in essence have the 445,000 that's available, and we could use that for other projects. But yeah, that, there wouldn't be any future requirement. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman?
Just to build upon it the other direction, if we were to significantly increase the in-lu fee, but then anyone could pay that fee, and it goes into the state of Local Housing Trust Fund, would we, one, would it, would we be able to get more affordable housing out of that versus market rate or not? And then would it be something that if those in-lu fees were higher and they went to the Local Housing Trust Fund, that those could theoretically be matched if the matching funds come back at some point?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse and Councilmember Friedman. That's exactly why we're doing the study we are right now with the consultant that we have looking into that. They will kind of evaluate, you know, how that does work with our development of units. I, I'm sorry, the other question that you had?
I think you answered it. It was, would we be able to, if we increased it, there's a potential that we could get more units built, but we're studying it, so we don't have that data right now.
There is potential for that, but it, it really depends on what the study comes back with because they do kind of evaluate how that affects the development of those units, yeah.
What's the timeline for the study to be?
I was just in a meeting yesterday, and I believe it's third quarter 2025.
So about a year from now, or a year and a half. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Gutierrez, had a question?
Yeah. But just to comment back on Councilmember Friedman, there is a proposal on the table for, to build affordable housing through the Housing Trust Fund. So we'll hear about that later. Just for clarification, I, I'm just a little nervous when, again, to the operation costs, the, the money, the $500,000 is just to reserve it to tell, to basically let the state know, like, we have enough money to keep this trust open? It's not necessarily we're paying, we're covering administration fees?
Thank you, Mayor Rouse and Councilmember Gutierrez. That actually is to cover administration costs. There is an eligible use of funds in that Local Housing Trust Fund that we have just created for administrative costs. It's 5% for what's in there, and then 5% for the matching part two. So that operating cost is for the state to ensure that the administration of that fund is accomplished with our staff.
Ms. Connect.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Gutierrez, just to be clear, we can only spend 5% of the fund on administrative costs. So this 100,000 that we put in to cover the, the ongoing costs can, cannot exceed 5%, but the, that, we have to have ongoing administrative costs in the fund in order to qualify this fund to be a Local Housing Trust Fund.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, very good. If there are no further questions, we will move on to the next section. Should be library.
Good evening. I'll be talking about two, the library funds. The first fund is the County Library. And this was brought up a little bit during the general fund meeting last week. But this fund is the budget for the Montecito Branch Library, which is funded by the county but managed by the city. And as noted last week as well, the funding may change once the county's budget deliberations are concluded. There is only one material change to this fund, and that is to increase library materials to account for 15% of the library's system total library materials budget as opposed to 10%. And that will help more accurately reflect library materials usage by the branch. Moving on to the miscellaneous grants fund. This fund's, this fund holds the library's grants and restricted donations. Budget appropriations are taken to council for approval as they are received. And this fund is generally not budgeted due to the unpredictability of grant availability and rewards. Additionally, many grants are multi-year awards that are carried forward. And library uses these funds to supplement programming, library service offerings, and staffing. And with that, I'll take questions.
Questions for the library? All right, very, oh, Ms. Sneddon.
I'm, I'm sure I have one, but I was just, I'm sorry, taking a minute to catch up, and I was on the wrong page, but I don't want to lose my chance. But maybe I could reserve asking a question at the end. But I think, I'll just go with it. The, so no change in the recommended budget. And does this take care of, I mean, we keep hearing about our collections and not having enough our collections in the long term, over time. Does, does this account for that or plan for that? Or is this sort of status quo and collections will go by attrition? Or if you could just speak to that?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon. So in regards to collections and specific to the, the grants fund, most of our grants awards are programmatic in nature. So they're, they're funding, you know, library lunch, things like that. We don't typically use those for, for collection purposes. We would use donations, things like that, for those kinds of purchases. Where, we can pivot a little bit and be creative with, with how we spend those for collections as we get those sort of donations. So this doesn't specifically address those.
Help me, okay, let me back up for a second. This is not the general library budget. This is just the Montecito Branch Grants. That's what I was missing. Okay. That, I have no questions. Thank you.
All right, further questions for this? Very good. We'll move on to fire.
Mayor Rouse, councilmembers, for the Fire Equipment Replacement Fund, we briefly talked about this last week during general fund meeting. The changes to the Fire Equipment Replacement Fund are associated with reduction efforts. And these include a recommended one-time return of the MDC reserve balance of 196,300 to be transferred to general fund, and a decrease of $34,850, which are being moved to Measure C.
Very good. Any questions on this section? Thank you. Move on to Parks and Rec.
During the meeting of October 17th, 2023, City Council approved the acceptance of a grant in the amount of roughly $2.9 million for the City of Santa Barbara wildfire prevention project. This project was developed by the Parks and Rec Department in conjunction with the Fire Department with the primary goal of implementing a comprehensive and sustainable approach to open space management and fuel reduction in accordance with the objectives stated in the city's 2021 Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And aims to reduce fire risk while avoiding disruption, disruption, disruption of the natural ecosystem, taking an active step in making the City of Santa Barbara a more fire-wise and resilient community. Although there is no proposed FY 2025 budget, this is an ongoing project, and with the FY 2024 actuals of $106,560 currently, there is a planned carryover of approximately $2.8 million.
All right, very good. Any questions on this part of Park and Rec? All right, thank you. Well, that will move on to police.
All right, the Police Asset and Forfeiture and Grant Fund has a very small change of a reduction of $132,907. And that was due to a position that we discovered was budgeted on two lines. It was done on a project and a non-project line. So we removed that and reduced the budget ever so slightly. As a reminder, this fund receives revenue from the state. It's used to cover staffing expenses related to fingerprinting services. The Police Services Specialist has been assigned this task since the retirement of an office specialist, too, that was performing it. And the workload shift will allow the funds here to cover 90% of the salaries and benefits.
Very good. Questions on that section? There you go. Move on to the next one. Measure A.
All right. Under Public Works, we'll be covering Measure A and Streets Funds. Measure A was a transportation measure that was approved in 2008 at the county level. This covers local street improvements such as pothole repairs and synchronized traffic signals, increasing senior and disabled accessibility to public transport, building safer walking and biking routes to schools, and providing increased opportunities for carpool and vanpool programs. In the coming year, there is an increase of $1.3 million to Measure A as some positions were shifted out of the Streets Fund into Measure A, partly to balance that fund. And there is also a reduction of $735,000 from the Measure A Capital Fund due to retiring the Carp Street Bridge replacement. Here is the capital intended for the Measure A Fund. As you see, there is a reduction from '24 to '25. Several of these projects, including sidewalk repairs, sidewalk access ramps, and overlays, are being covered with Measure C and Streets funding. Under the Streets Fund, the major highlights are that, as we all know, the cost of living adjustments, et cetera, have had an impact on the personnel costs, starting in FY '24. In FY '25, the budget is balanced, but we will need some attention moving forward because of the structural deficit of this fund. Positions had moved from Streets Fund to Measure A. That was the $1.3 million seen two slides ago. The Streets Capital Plan for the next year is $2.2 million for overlays. Again, part of that is covered in Measure C. It's approximately $20,000 there. Sorry, 20 million.
Thank you. Questions on the Public Works section? Very good. We'll move on to, oh, Ms. Sneddon.
Thank you. So if you could just comment on, sometimes we hear that we might have enough Measure C funding to do the paving, but we don't have enough staff members to actually do that paving. Is that accurate? Or is there any amount of Measure C funds that can't be expended because we either, there's a supply shortage, or not enough staffing, or some other reason that there's Measure C funds that can't be expended based on staff?
Good evening again, Mayor and Councilmember Sneddon. I want to nip that one in the bud. There's one area within our Measure C that we're doing tremendous, and much to the credit of Derek Bailey and the work he's putting in, is we are executing our paving program. This year will be fully executed, and we have no reason to believe, either whether it's in-house or by contract, we are doing a great job of getting that work under contract or scheduled with our in-house workforce, and then performing it within the year it was programmed.
Excellent, thank you. I just, another opportunity again to say the Riviera paving has been really phenomenal. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Move on to the next section, please. Sustainability and Resilience.
Mayor Rouse, councilmembers, we are on our last section here for Sustainability and Resilience Creeks. For revenue details, the Mission of the Creeks Restoration and Water Quality Improvement Division is to improve creek and ocean water quality and restore natural creek system. The changes to revenue in the recommended FY '25 budget from the two-year approved budget is, are a $166 decrease in taxes and a $146,000 increase in use of money and property associated with interest income. In the expenditure detail, thank you, there is an increase in salaries benefits and benefits of $147,365 associated with an additional position to conduct the water quality analysis that was previously completed by the Creeks Code Enforcement Officer, an increase of $21,777 in allocated cost, an increase of $307 in supplies and services, with the majority of that increase being in non-contractual services associated with the residential street sweeping contract, which was not originally included in the base budget. There's also a $100,000 capital outlay transfer, a $12,900 increase in special projects, and a $5,000 decrease in non-capital equipment. For notable changes, they added an associate planner to perform water quality analysis and design review, which had a $147,365 increase and a $9,600 variance associated to centralizing community engagement in a new program. For their capital, the only capital project that is being recommended with a change from the FY '24 adopted budget is the Urban Creeks Trails and Access Project, which is being recommended with a $100,000 budget. And street sweeping changes, there are no major changes to commercial street sweeping, and the residential street sweeping moved to creeks in FY 2024.
Questions for this section? All right, very good. Thank you very much. There, that was to be presented. I don't know if there are further questions or public comment or discussion. Very long, but very crisply presented presentation, so well done. Ms. Sneddon?
Is there a public comment, Mayor Rouse, or is it time for?
There is one public commenter online.
There is. Oh, yes, I think Ms. Heller is online, isn't she?
Ms. Heller, if you could please unmute yourself. Ms. Heller?
Your Grace, Mayor Rouse and Councilwoman, I'm still here, and as are you.
Okeydoke.
First off, thank you, thank you, thank you to all of you, to staff for their incredible work trying to manage this very challenging fiscal moment, and to this council for diving in on such a complicated process. I want to give an extra shout out to Sustainability and Resilience for doing such an amazing job. It's really gratifying to see the city's commitment to sustainability literally paying off as it manages energy, environmental protection, and waste. as it manages energy, environmental protection, and waste, and does so with surpluses. As you might remember, the Creeks Division was moved to Sustainability and Resilience recently about the same time that you appointed me to the Creeks Advisory Committee. I take very seriously the stewardship that Ms. Clark mentioned in her overview of Measure B and the CAC. I'm not going to repeat the detail I went into in my long email to y'all regarding use of Measure B funds to replace funds sourced from the parking fund. Mr. Jordan's no-way, no-how sums it up nicely, and I appreciate Ms. Sneddon's acknowledgement of the role of Measure B funding guidelines as summarized by Ms. Clark. Ms. Clark mentioned that those funding guidelines have been repeatedly affirmed by council over the years, and you've seen the ballad initiative language and how it very pointedly restricts those funds for creek and ocean water quality protection. I just want to add this. It's unimaginable that the city would extend free parking to 90 minutes, adding to the fund's deficit, when the free 75-minute period is 25 years old and cannot be blamed for empty lots, when we had two decades where the lots were well-used with 75 free minutes. That you would increase the program's already hefty deficit by going back to 90 minutes and think about rating Measure B funds to help reduce that deficit is really not acceptable. Even the late, great Lee Muldaver, the greater-to-my-lesser Lee, would oppose that. I personally think that parking will rebound when there are more reasons for people to come back to the CBD. We're willing to pay for parking if there's a reason to be there. Longer free periods are not the answer, nor is taking money from Measure B. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And there are further speakers online. All right. And with that, any councilmember staff engagements? Ms. Sneddon?
Mayor Rouse, may I comment on the items?
You may.
Okay. Thank you. So I will start with sustainability and resilience. Wow. Again, you budgeted conservatively. You came in high. And then when you did, you decided to pay back general fund early, and that $2 million is really needed there. So thank you for that. I just want to point out, too, that it's really an example of when you make sustainable, resilient choices. It actually created jobs and funds, so we shouldn't be afraid of moving in that direction. The self-insurance fund, that is really troubling for several years now, really troubling. And we're going to have to look at that over time. For downtown parking, just now that we had our initial meeting and then this coming back, so I just wanted to share my perspective at the moment and, you know, as we're moving forward. I do support downtown parking being a general fund. I think it just continues to actually make more and more sense the more we look at it. I like the employee passes, the local passes. I think you could still play around with it, whether it's a local passes Monday through Thursday or something, or the pass being attached to a particular vehicle instead of like to a person, so it's not like pass-aroundable. Or, I don't know. I think you really went for it with the greatest possible benefit to the community. And I think now, looking at those two end members, could kind of play around with those numbers. I do like the 90 minutes free parking still, and then leaving the rest around the city as it's already set. So I think in the motion, it was 75 minutes. But I think, hearing back today, I was thinking, well, if it's already 15 minutes, leave it 15 minutes. If it's already 90 minutes, leave it 90. If it's 75, leave it whatever it is for the, around the street. And this is just my opinion. I just want to reiterate again, as I said before, let's not use Measure B and/or step out of our lane with the Creeks Committee. I do take some exception to not being able to ask the question, though. It was a question. Let's look at Measure B. Is it appropriate? Staff appropriately came back and said, it's not appropriate. And I thank you very much. But I really don't like the term being raided or, you know, clawing after something. And I have been appropriately educated by Lee Heller and by Lori Gaskin with very much thanks that you are in the very perfect position, and as is your charge to protect Measure B. And you did a very nice, thorough job of educating us, and I'm very grateful for that. But I don't want there to be a lingering result that we can't ask a question of how is a fund used and come back with us and inform us and inform the public. I'm not sure if you weren't here 20 years ago and happened to vote on Measure B, if you knew that or not. And that's for the public as well. So I do appreciate being able to ask the questions. And I think it's very, very important that we not be afraid of asking questions. And I want to thank you for answering those questions. And I'll reiterate what Councilmember Jordan said, you know, no way, no how. And I think Mayor Rouse was on his way to saying something similar to that.
Oh, really?
Earlier, oh, sorry, sorry. But I'll say it. I'll say it for myself. But I, again, do appreciate being able to ask the question. I do support the use of clean community funds for street cleaning, and I appreciate Ms. Prentow for bringing that forward as a possibility. Again, if this is in general fund, I really think the functions of downtown parking really fall under general fund. Keeping our downtown clean and accessible and welcoming is sort of general fund charge to me. And again, I just really feel the need to reiterate, I do not expect creeks or Measure B to be maintaining or taking care of our downtown. And I will leave it. Oh, one more thing. I would support either greatly increasing the in-loe fees so we could actually build units or really requiring the inclusionary units be built and maybe even increasing the number of inclusionary units required. I'd be happy to look at both of those options.
Ms. Gutierrez?
I just want to thank city staff again for your work, especially the Finance Department. Thank you for just having an open-door policy to me and walking through this process. I also want to support Ms. Sneddon's, because Councilmember Sneddon's comment about being able to ask the question. I think it's really important that, you know, especially in the time when we're reviewing the budget, most people in the community are working. And to be able to ask those questions, I think it's very valuable. My other just comment is that if we can, and I can talk to you privately about this, but I think because we are serving the public, if we can just be very clear when presenting, staying away from the acronyms. And we, it's something that we naturally do, but I've gotten comments, especially in the community, where they say, hey, Ale, I listened to the council meeting, but it's so confusing because you guys use terms that we don't understand. And they try to stay tuned to see if they can understand, you know, what we're talking about. So we can just keep that in mind. But thank you so much for all your hard work.
All right, very good. Well, we'll be discussing all these a little bit further on as we get into June 4. And we will be reconvening on June 4. This is it till then. And with that, Ms. Sneddon has come.
I'm sorry, Mayor Rouse. I meant to do committee, I'm not committee, but other reports. Just really quickly.
Okay, go right ahead.
As many of us did, attended the Peace Officer Memorial, Santa Barbara City College graduation, wildfire evacuation and survivability workshop, and the Riviera Spring Annual Meeting.
Ms. Gutierrez?
Yes, I attended the STESA event, their annual. They turned 50 years old, that organization. They have served the community for 50 years now, and it's been, they've done an amazing work. I attended the 1-805 fundraiser, and they give money to law enforcement, especially in the mental health area. I also attended the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, their annual gathering that they had.
Mr. Friedman?
Thank you. I also attended the Hispanic Chamber Annual Gala, STESA 50th, Family Service Agency 125th, and then Santa Barbara Outrigger Canoe Club hosted Outrigger Race for Southern California this weekend, and I did my first Outrigger canoe race since 2008. So I'm a little bit tired and sore still, even though it was on Saturday, so.
Who's going to ask you if you've been working out? Mr. Gutierrez?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I attended the Peace Officers Memorial and the Summer Solstice fundraiser at Spescucci's, the Downtown Santa Barbara Arts and Wine Tour, the Greater Hispanic Chambers Gala at the Showgrounds, STESA fundraiser, 50th Anniversary fundraiser, Psycho Mania, where we got to do a bike ride around Santa Barbara from the west side to the east side of downtown. Attended the Family Service Agency fundraiser and the Youth Council. And I also attended two neighborhood cleanups, one on the west side on Chino Street and one on State Street on Saturday. And the one on the west side was at 9:00 a.m., and I almost didn't show up to that because I was kind of tired. But I showed up anyway, and I was glad I did because as I was walking down San Andreas Street, I saw a pile of cigarette butts on the street curb. And when I went and got closer, I realized that not only were there cigarette butts, but there was also tin foil matches, a straw, and a baggie of this white substance. And when I saw that, I looked up, and down the block was a group of kids walking. And I quickly just dumped everything into my trash bag that I had. And it hit me right then and there that, you know, that's why we have neighborhood cleanups, is to catch stuff like that